...County Board of County Commissioners Wednesday, August the 16th, 2017 at 12 o'clock. Mr. Prince, please lead us in pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Katnig?
Present.
Commissioner Hood?
Present.
Commissioner Prince?
Yes.
Attorney Clint Smith?
Present.
And clerk to the board Kelly Camper?
Present.
Thank you. Do we have any amendments to the agenda at this time?
I do.
Okay.
I'd like to add a building codes topic. The request from the president of the fair board.
Just a second. Building code what?
Building codes discussion.
Okay, okay. And fair board discussion?
Fair board discussion.
Okay.
The GO Code grant. The gateway to success request. Gateway to success request.
Request.
Do you want to handle this under old business on the building code and?
Sure.
What else is under old there?
Oh, James.
The other three would be new, wouldn't they?
Yeah, the other three are new.
I had asked Brenda to put the building codes for the August 31st meeting. I'm fine doing it now, but we put it on the agenda for the end of the month meetings because we felt it probably be more appropriate to have it up in our.
I just want to make a comment.
Okay.
So that would be under Commissioner Calm items and probably.
You want me to put it in that's part? Actually.
Anything else, Jake?
Not under new business, have old business.
Okay. Do I hear a motion approved? The agenda has amended?
So moved.
Now seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion approved. This time we'll do the audience introduction and I guess maybe we'll start right over here with you, Donna.
John Johnston?
Dan Anderson?
Jack Hughes of Conwell, Susan Stedew, Ann Bartram, Ann Wilson.
Becky Van Winkle?
Sherry Block?
Bill Broad, Cross Creek Springs.
Mine.
Why you better grab?
Um. This is the girl. Is my family?
Hi, Rector. Just an interested observer.
Cherry Rector?
Cherry Rector.
Mr. Chairman Whitman?
Jackie Hobbie? Plaid and Sully?
Gary Hyggin, County Road 36, George Clark.
Chairman Ross Sher.
Bruce Farr, Whitmore.
John Farr, Whitmore.
Okay, thank you very much. Have we missed anybody? Okay. We have some minutes to approve. Would the clerk like to bring those forward at this time, please?
Uh, they were from, um, July 31st and August 1st and 2nd.
Okay, I've reviewed these. Have you folks had a chance to review them?
Yep.
Okay. Let's do them one by one. Do I hear a motion to approve the July 31st, 2017 minutes?
Make that motion.
I'll second it. All in favor say aye. Aye. Minutes approved. I've got to decide which one. Okay, this is here. Uh, we will go to the August 1st minutes next. I reviewed them and see no changes. Do I hear a view?
Nine months ago.
I'll make a motion. We approve them.
Second?
Motion made to second. We approve the minutes of August 1st, July of 2017. All in favor say aye. Aye. Oh, same sign. Motion carries. On the proceedings of the minutes on August the 2nd, I do have one item that I would like to add to those minutes. Uh, we had a, uh, it's not necessary that we spend time going over all of our reports and report them in our minutes. However, I would like to add to these minutes, and I visited with Kelly very briefly, a little summary of the county fair. Uh, we do have a written report from the county fair and I would just like to add that the, uh, I don't know. This is just the gist of it. No safety incidents, accidents during the fair, a great deal of fun. The community was very supportive. The atmosphere was joyful, upbeat, filled with families helping the other, helping one another. Kids showed positive sportsmanship commitment and a fully dedicated work ethic to their projects. Uh, we had a very enthusiastic report from the fair, uh, from Sarah Shields and I would like, somehow maybe we can add that to the minutes. Do we have any, you folks have any comments?
In favor of it?
I'll let you work out the detail on that, but at this time I will make a motion that we approve the minutes of August the 2nd as amended. Second. Moved and seconded. We approve the minutes of August the 2nd as amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. The next item on our agenda will be public comment. Our, the way we normally do this, folks, would take any and all things you have. Traditionally, if something's going to take more than about five minutes, we will add it to the next meeting as the agenda item. So at this time, I'll be happy to entertain any public comments from the folks that are here. Yes, Bill?
Could I let Becky Van Winkle speak to one subject, please?
Sure.
Go ahead, you're right here, never mind.
Aye.
Becky Van Winkle. We've been having real issues with our CenturyLink landline before the fire, after the fire, more so. It's causing so many issues with not just my household, but my neighbors and apparently many more Custer County residents that we can't even make phone calls when it rains or this coming winter when it snows. Uh, any kind of moisture at all just knocks it out. Can't get a call out, can't get a call in. My neighbor, Bill Donnelly, is right there at the head of the waters there above Whitmore where he can see and let people know or let Sheriff's Office know, send out emergency calls for the residents for flash flooding. Can't make the call. And it's just become an incredibly consistent problem because we've had a lot of water this year. I have made numerous repair tickets with CenturyLink for myself and for my neighbors and, um, sometimes they come out. This last time they didn't come out. They didn't call. They closed our repair ticket without giving us any indication as to why. So once I talked to enough people, I decided to put it on our community board on Facebook to find out how many people in the area have had an issue and it turned out quite a few. And News 5 caught hold of that and did a story on it for us last week. So, um, hoping to get some kind of action that will repair these lines. They are, CenturyLink is currently blaming it on County Road 36, which they cannot get to. However, I think most of us agree that that's probably not where it's at, but would like to give them the opportunity to be escorted back there and check that out since that's what they are claiming the issue is. But we just have a little trouble being able to communicate with the outside world if we need to.
I'm sorry you're having that problem. Unfortunately, it's not unique. We've been fighting with the 911 authority providers with the landlines and also some of the cell phone providers. I think what I would like, and I'll let my other colleagues respond, but I would like you, if you would, to please get a letter listing each of these and have individual letters from those folks. And I will, I will send them to Cory Gardner's office and, um, and express our concern because the fact that it's CenturyLink and landline, it is under a whole different set of regulations and requirements than if it were cellular. And those are much more strict. And I think if you could do that for us, I mean, it's something that we've been fighting on the west end of the county for a year and a half now. And if you would, if you wouldn't mind, uh, if I, if I can lay those out, that means a whole lot more than just, I'm just writing a letter.
Is there somewhere we can tell people that they can go sign a petition to add their names to the list? Uh, because we are working on a letter. We have contacted the PUC and I was told by the PUC that we have loosened up our restrictions on the communications companies to where their hands are tied, often even in CenturyLink's case. So getting a lot of.
If you would like.
We can't really do anything.
If you would like to have something like that and have it at the, and I'm just suggesting that maybe at the community center. Uh, but I also would like, I personally, a petition's a petition when they kind of look at it, but they've got all those individual letters. They, they'd look at it in more detail than they do if they just have a petition.
Okay, I'll just throw it out.
Well, let's see what else my colleagues have to say.
I support what you suggested, Mr. Chairman, and I would be happy to sign a letter by the three commissioners agreeing with the petition and the problems that you have. My biggest concern is not that your grandma say hello, is that if someone's sick and gone, I wonder what. But in this day and age, telephone service and landline should not be a major issue. So I would support the commissioners' letter.
I might add, if I could, I've had some experience with regulated utilities in my, in my business life. And, uh, they're good people and they typically are driven by this county is so small, there's not enough people here to actually get a return on their investment by putting fiber optic in, which would solve all of the problems on the phone lines and the internet as well. However, they do have a responsibility to even the rural community like ours. And it is necessary to become a very squeaky wheel, stay nice, stay, not getting ugly, not getting mad, but never quit. So our community really does have to come together. The letters is a great idea. I think you should do that. I think the Sentinel could help us. I think the Channel 5 could help us. At some point when the CEO of CenturyLink gets tired of the squeak, it'll get solved. And that's about it because the, the local workers aren't going to make this decision. They can't. They don't have the authority. So we have got to get Senator Gardner to help us. We've got to get the governor to help us. And then, and I think that Becky would be happy to put that on Facebook and be kind of the center of.
We, we've been struggling with AT&T for the last year and a half on, on dropping the 911 service during peak times. And one thing that I have found out is that they really get uncomfortable when we go to the senator's level.
Right.
They don't want that negative connotation to come out.
That affects other stuff.
Yes.
That's where that's.
And that's where I think we have to go with this to, to put a stick of dynamite in the logjam.
Absolutely. 100%.
Chairman? Um, I did reach out and contact CenturyLink last week both about the problem in South Hurst, traveling the roads, those lines that are not going to be able to repair and the problem with the wet lines agreeing with it. And I'm going to get her contact and share that with Shannon.
Good. Let's visit. Thanks. And Cindy is, is the manager of office of emergency preparedness. And if any of you have looked down South Hurst, although you probably haven't been down there, but there's a number of locations where the communication's cable is exposed.
Yes.
And that's going to have to be addressed sometime. But it's something that we need to do and, and we will, I think. Yes, Pam?
Well, in light of that, I think presented as a county issue because we have problems with this too. And we have a line that they just lay on top of the ditch and then we don't have service half the time and it rains or snows. So I think Whitmore could be our catalyst for doing this, but it is a county issue that's going to tell.
If you would also respond in a letter that I.
Absolutely.
So we can, uh, this is what, you know, the, the voice of the people and we have had, uh, I think very good communication with Senator Gardner on a number of different issues and I would be happy, but I'd like to see if Donna has any comments. We've been kind of walking around.
Well, I think we could also offer to put on the county's website, uh, the fact that we would be accepting letters. I guess I'm trying to be realistic in thinking of a timeline for when you want to do this and get the word out. So maybe you could let us know that and we can put that on the website and accept letters that record us too.
Well, News 5 said that they would do a follow-up story so I can be in contact with that reporter and just kind of give us a timeline. And I don't mind receiving letters at my post office box wherever. One place, I don't care, but.
But I just think a coordinated effort and send those packages of letters.
When, when we had the AT&T issue too, so on our Facebook, Sheriff's Facebook page, we were just getting lists of people who were having issues with AT&T too instead of collecting, you know, hundreds of letters. And that was just effective. In fact, we got more names than we wanted a list, you know, to a point. So it was crazy and so we could use something as well as that. And so if your community pays to share this and that, I could use that on the web. It measures it just a customer.
I don't know that all of them have the same issue, but a lot.
I would like those letters to reflect their individual issues. If 10 people have got different issues, that means there's a whole lot more to the system than just one short.
I can be.
And we, again, I think, I mean, that brings in then the local, local level of the issue.
Well, and I think it's really negative too when, I mean, they did it on the news report of CenturyLink. Just said, well, we can't fix it because we can't get into 386, which is a, I think that's a complete cop-out and it's ludicrous. I think we even state that because we've made it very apparent that we, I mean, the gate, we can open that at any time. We need to allow that access. And that's just, I think that really points to, you know, they don't take it serious.
And guess what? They don't, they have power line or phone lines in some really rugged country that they actually have to walk to inspect them. So they say that they can't do it. I can't accept that. Okay. Okay, anything else? Yes, sir. On this issue, on the AT&T.
No, separate.
Okay, Bill?
Uh, I'm Bill Broad. I have a ranch on County Road 387, which is the road that goes between Highway 96 and U. And where the fire was stopped by tremendous effort by a lot of people and you all were aware. Thank you for giving that up there to that, to answer CSI because what happened was the fire prevention folks used that as their base for landing the helicopters and putting out four pots, 45 trucks, hundreds of firefighters and they all went up into the forest on my house, basically. While we couldn't be there, we were not allowed there for two weeks while this fire was going on. And one of the things that happened during that time, of course, that wears out property into the road. That kind of going up there, I had crushed asphalt road to go from County Road 387 up to my house. And it got packed down to a rhythm, basically. And some places where it's actually dirt's kind of because of the heavy trucks and that's kind of normal. But while we were fighting that fire, uh, I've got pictures of the fire from a helicopter where it had actually stopped. But they were very concerned that the wind was going to come back up and it would ever have trouble keeping it from jumping alive. So they actually took incendiary devices and dropped them out of helicopters on my ranch and burned about 60 acres of my trees and the national forest behind us, which is very sad to me. I've got a picture of that fire going and it's flaming right beside my barn. And, um, the fire didn't burn my property. The firefighters burned my property. So that kind of, in, in this kind of an emergency situation, landowners know that we've got to do what's best for the community. We've got to do the best we can to get that fire out because we can't let it get down to Greenwood and Whitmore and start burning more folks out. Get that, as sad as it is. So basically we took one for the team. But in the process, the Forest Service also, firefighters, they're, they'll compensate this for tearing up. They'll fix the road back and they'll do that and so far we have not seen any, we have not gotten back for getting that thing back. And it's getting so bad now that it's eroding with these new rains and I'm going to have to start replacing it. It cost me $18,000, $18,000 to put it in perfect. So I, I don't want to have to replace it. I want to fix it. We have been told by some folks in the previous board, Lynn Atterbury was working with the same people you all are working with. Checks in the mail. Oh, I have never seen a check. And I just need, I need to bring it to the county commissioners' attention. It is not a county problem. It is not county money that should be spent on it. It is a fire recovery problem. And I know y'all are working on other things in that effort and have even talked to the same folks. So I appreciate your efforts on that very much. I ask for you to please keep it up. I'm going to keep doing it. I hope I can get in a squeaky wheel with, with the bureaucrats, but, uh, we're just, I just really would like to see something done before I have to replace that whole road. So this, Bob, I, I know I need to talk with you and to Jenny and I appreciate y'all's help very much if you have something to add to that.
I'd like to summarize if I may a little bit, folks. And please, Cindy, jump in when I get off track here. But when we had the fire, the first response was local, was, was fire departments within the county. And then the next response was to get state support. And Joe LaBianca, who lives in Penrose, uh, is with the wildfire prevention mitigation group. And Joe was actually on scene to help me out, Shannon, by maybe 10 or 11 that morning.
Yeah.
I think. And they, they backdated our request from about 10 o'clock back to 6 o'clock so that they could cover from the state to county, local expenses. Then as it moves on, as it moves into federal lands or in the Forest Service land, to BLM lands, well, then the, uh, office emergency many and FEMA and the Forest Service, I mean, they, they step up and, and become a part.
Not FEMA.
Excuse me, Forest Service. And, and then when we get through, we have to sit down and divvy up the expenses as who's going to pay what. The, uh, this is just my guess, but in looking at the, the land that was burned, it was about 50/50 private and public. And I would anticipate that they may be in that area of a 50/50 settlement when they finally come together. Uh, my knowledge is that they just hasn't, these settlements have not occurred yet. I talked to Joe, Bill, and you were aware of this, LaBianca asking about the checks and he said it was to be sent to you and was in the mail and that's been almost a month ago. I think we have to continue to see what we can do. In Bill's case, folks, the damage to the road is way more than a simple, uh, run over with a motor grader will fix. And it's certainly beyond our county capabilities and also it's private land and not on the county. If it was at the, right there along the road, it would be different, but we have to address it. And I think what we need to do, Bill and I, and Cindy, help me out here, would be best maybe if we just, if we contacted Joe LaBianca again and asked where we are with that statute. Would you like to add?
Yeah, I think contacting Joe or Aaron and my understanding is that they may need to make a settlement on the road. I kind of think burning out those trees is part of statutes and they do it in the act. And, you know, all this plug that, you know, this, this is the first big fire we have, but the epidemiology in the forest, we are going to see things escalate in the next five years and black is going to become the new green. And we need to get serious about fire prevention and mitigation and doing everything we can. We're going to see more of this flooding. We're going to see more burning. And FEMA is raising their thresholds from 7.2 million to 12 million. DFPC is who Joe works for, Colorado Division of Fire Prevention and Control. I think it's Aaron we need to speak to on the settlement, but I'll start with Joe. And I'm not going to fit in so, Phil, and I thought last fall or early winters. They've got two years to close out all the payments. The disaster declaration is, even though there's some wording on recovery, the state has denied our request for recovery and it's all going to suppression. And then after the end of that two years, if there's any money left, I know it's actually another fund that they, that the state stole from to get it into the EFM fund. Um, so it's kind of a learning process there, but, uh, I'll also reach out to Custer and see if they have some ideas. We're going to do a private property mitigation workshop in September to teach people how to do log erosion barriers and how to drop trees and how to do things because there really is no funding for private land to do mitigation. So we have some volunteers. Team Ruben Ham is coming in this weekend to do some work in the room. But it's really kind of a grassroots effort. So I've got cards here. If anyone wants to follow up with me later.
Bill, let's, let's get together. After we're done, maybe if you're still here, maybe Cindy and you and I can visit.
Perfect. Thank you.
Just a quick question, Bill. Did they, I'm assuming they asked permission to park all their vehicles?
No.
No?
No. No, they, I didn't know they were even, we didn't know.
Because you were gone and they just picked a place to do it.
Yeah, I guess it's a beautiful flat meadow area right there on the national forest that made it perfect for all the purposes.
And that land?
No. Well, and I do now after the fact, and that had to do with the reseeding of the, oh, I don't know, five or six acres that was completely dirt when they got through, which actually is not even necessary because nature, and that's pretty tough grass up there. It wouldn't have rained any of the back. But, um, the road itself is a big problem for me and I know that about the burning of the trees. It seems sad to me that, I know when we have public interest things, that we do power lines somewhere or roads somewhere, we compensate the landowner by basically saying, we're going to take your property for the best of all. But in this case, they don't do that. They just have the right to go run my place. They will, they.
Yeah, I would suggest, Jackie, before we get a long ways down there, we check, you check into the statutes because I'm sure that the Forest Service and the state people didn't go in there and take, take over that land without something from a public safety standpoint or something.
No, no. My point was.
That was necessary to.
They didn't contact me.
People won't give permission if they know that, yeah, they're going to come on my land, they're going to ruin things and they're not going to fix. Is my point. And I'm not, this is not for the paper. This is just curious.
This, most people love to, are very happy to give permission because if they get it stopped, it'll save their buildings and their land.
We would have given permission had we been asked. Absolutely. If it commits an emergency, we got to let our emergency officials do what they got to do. You know, that, I'm all for that. I'm, I'm even, like I said, taking much of the team in this is sad. Uh, and I wish it wasn't that way, but it is. So, okay. But if there is recovery funds that can help replace that road that got ruined, then that would be very helpful. And I, I hope there is.
And unfortunately, this is a really, this is a common occurrence when you start dealing with the Forest Service and fires and all the damage that occurs. I know during the ducking fires, Maytag had this very similar issue too. They, uh, Rob Canterbury let the force come in and stage in one of his hay fields and they promised that they were going to give him money back because hay was on the, or hadn't been put up yet. So then he lost, uh, like you said, 10, 15 acres worth of hay and were there staged and beat down and they promised all of these, you know, you know, to refund his losses. And to this day, he's never seen, uh, any back on that. And that's, you know, duck is what, eight years? Eight years. People do it. So, and that's, and that's the challenge because as Jackie said, people stretch it because for the Hayden Pass fire, Maytag said absolutely not. The Forest Service will not come on my property, period. It's not up for discussion because they were, they were, you know, treated poorly. I was going to say burned, but.
And they gave you.
So.
Well, I think.
Because you have the people on the ground that are trying to make these agreements because they're trying to fight the fire and then you have the bureaucrats above them to come back later and don't back up those decisions. And I'm not supporting it. It is, it's a, it's a multi-tiered problem.
I think it'd be two years to get Bill down. You have to perform some pressure side. And if you're two years on the day, it's, you're, you're too late. Personally, there's a lot of talk that two years is way too long. So, um, you know, in terms of the county share at five or 6%, I mean, it could theoretically be five, $600,000 or more. I don't think that's likely, but, you know, that's another thing that's they're thinking about down the road is, you know, we have a local cost and we don't want to raise taxes. We don't want building codes. We don't want fire codes. But someday we may have, we may have locally more than our budget's going to be prepared to do.
Okay, I would like to move on, folks. I think we're drifting just a little bit here. Anything else, Bill, that you'd like to summarize? Okay, any other comments in the audience? Okay, any other comments in the audience?
Bob, I wanna bring up some old business, and I don't know if I got on the agenda since I was late.
Um, well, if it's old business, then...
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you for your comments. I would like to move now into the commissioner items. Commissioner Wood.
Okay. Um, first of all, I just wanna mention that we're looking into a solution for locking and unblocking the doors of the courthouse. So we're in process with that. With the change of the new hours for the building, it's just caused a little bit of a headache for everybody. So we're hopefully gonna find an answer, a resolution, and try to get something that will close automatically at five and open at eight. I received a quote from the Open Media Review regarding specific grant on the hardware part. So Chuck and I will be meeting to confirm what that hardware cost is. I wanna mention that after spending a lot of time playing phone tag with Marty Galvin, he did return a phone call yesterday. I didn't get to speak to him directly, but I had left him a detailed message. And what I got back in return, he had originally asked about the underfunded grant money that was left. I believe it's around a hundred and forty to a hundred and forty-five thousand, whether we could apply that to a different project. And what he's saying is that the grants could be rolled, that grant money could be rolled over into a new project, but we have to amend and make a new application. The next grant round is opening up soon, and the allocation of that money will be done by the end of this calendar year. So he left off mentioning a phone call to him, and I guess Shannon's here. Shannon, I don't know if we wanna have a workshop and try to schedule a conference call with him. I don't know if he'll come down, but I think sooner than later is better in lieu of what we wanna do, because I know Wells is contacting Brenda monthly now, and so we're just kinda hanging out there. But it took him this long, it's two months for him to respond to that initial question.
That's pretty normal for Marty.
Yeah, okay.
But, but I think a workshop would be appropriate. We need to discuss that with Lisa Rowe too, because Lisa Rowe has to be, who is the court administrator for the Department of District?
So...
So she needs to be...
So Lisa too?
Okay.
So I'll, I'll coordinate that. Okay. All of us should have received an invitation from CCI going to the Mountain District meeting coming up next week, the twenty-fourth at Summit County in Frisco, Colorado. Were either one of you looking to go to that?
I don't think so. How many did I hold up?
Okay. Um, I may attend that. Okay. Uh, we all got copies forwarded from Brenda on the Golenda Insurance and Benefit Consulting. Brenda, you actually met with the man, and at this point, that letter is saying that he's suggesting we stay with what we have. Do you have any comments?
Well, um, I've been working with him since like February, because I had spoken to him last year. And usually every year, we try to get three bids on our health insurance for the county. And he was gonna be one of the bids, but he said they're, they just, he knew that it wouldn't be under what we already have, so he was just not gonna do it, so.
Okay.
And then we'll get, we'll get a couple more, and then that'll be in October.
Getting that information from a couple more?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Um, the last thing I, I just wanna comment on, and I just, I wanna put it out there to the commissioners, is, okay, we've gone through two public meetings, one hosted by the commissioners and one hosted by planning and zoning. I am still, I don't know if both of you are getting inquiries, but I'm still getting comments from people that weren't in attendance from either one. And I'm suggesting consideration for doing a survey to our county property owners. That doesn't mean people that can just vote in our counties, actually the owners. What was mentioned in these meetings is we've got people that own land, but they're not living here. And to me, it's still up to us unless we say to our planning commission that we're headed down the direction of putting this on the ballot. But this would validate for me as a commissioner that I've done my due diligence to be a voice for all of our citizens, not just a few of our citizens. So I spoke with Kelly before the meeting and asked her if our county has ever done a survey, and she's not remembering that we have.
Thank you.
That's not to say that we can't do a survey. She mentioned that our assessor could give us the names and addresses and possibly do the labels to do a mailing. And I'm just asking if they think that might be a good idea to get a voice from all property owners in our county. Discussion?
Alan, I asked Brenda to put this on the agenda, actually, I asked her to put it on the agenda today, but she was appropriate, which is said to be better off if it was up in, in, uh, Hester County. We're kind of, but up at our recording, but more people could attend if it shows to... Um, you know, I spoke with Jackie Harvey about the planning zoning committee. They said, and they said they were opposed to it, that they were not opposed to it to go to a vote. And Jackie, if I'm saying anything correctly, please jump in. Um, I'm not sure we're gonna learn a whole lot more. I think we've had two meetings. I think the voice is pretty clear as to what those two meetings were, although I'm not sure they were really representative of all the people, certainly represented those that were there. So I think the thing to do, in my opinion, is if, you know, I make the motion next meeting, let's just put it to a vote and let's get it over with. Do it, don't do it. I think we've fooled around with it for a long time. The pros and cons are out there, and we oughta just get on with it. That's my opinion, but I'm not opposed to what you're doing, other than that'll take more time, it'll come in very mixed. I suspect it'll come in mixed again, and ultimately, I think the people should...
Can I comment? Because I have a box in my office for one time when I did this, and...
You did a survey?
Uh, no, this time.
No, no, but I mean, you did a countywide survey to property owners.
We did, no, let me clarify our survey.
Okay.
It was a, a committee that was put in place before I, uh, I stuffed the envelope, and it was to everyone in the unincorporated part of the county that had received a building permit or drawings. We got more back than we had anticipated, and we did that kind of survey. Then it was still up in arms because we got people commenting on, well, I don't want a building code, but I also don't want electrical code, and I don't want a plumbing code. So it got to be where people were not focused on the question itself, they started bringing in their personal building experience, and we ended up with some surveys that, well, I didn't like my builder, I didn't do this and stuff. So it is very hard to do a survey and even get anything back. We even offered a hundred dollars worth of free groceries in a drawing if you would return your survey. Because a lot of times, people just say, I'm not gonna do that survey, or they don't follow the instructions on the survey, and they add them. And that's the problem with the survey.
I guess...
And it's a sad deal because when you start passing rules and regulations like a building code, it's just for the unincorporated part of the county. It's not for the towns and stuff.
Right.
So when people are commenting that they want building codes and stuff, you have to filter out who actually owns the house in Custer County.
Right.
Like who, so the people that are commenting to you that didn't like the way the turnout was, we had public meetings both posted adequately. And a lot of people will say, well, I would have been there, but I had to, I was on my way back from shopping and stuff. And so to me, no, you be there if you wanna be heard.
Okay.
And you speak up when it's your time, because we posted well. So that's my feeling and stuff. And, and so I just don't know how many more times that you need to have a public meeting or do a survey, because I've, I've had experiences with surveys and even a hundred dollars for groceries, I think that's what tipped the scale of the first time. Was we offered a hundred dollars for free groceries if people would return it. And then there's some, I think there's some other issues that need to be discussed, the cost and stuff. So I, even before we even put it on a ballot, we gotta get some other things down.
I, I agree with you. And I guess what, what time period, Jackie, are you talking about the, the last survey was?
Two thousand and eight.
I'd like to move on. I think we're getting on the law of the commissioner. I appreciate the discussion, but this is kind of a reported...
And, and I agree. I think that it's on, I, it's on the agenda for the thirty-first, and I think it needs to stay.
Okay.
Anything else, Jay?
I was responding, but how are you doing? I've got just a couple little things.
That was all of my commissioner items.
Okay, I'll go real quick here. Um, I've been working closely with...
Need to speak up just a little?
I'm sorry, and I apologize. I do that all the time. I've been working closely with the architect and the, and the builder down in Wetmore. We have still issues outstanding. Um, I, we've, I'll let it rest until these things are done, I want you to know that. I'm in contact with my people, and my people, the people of Wetmore who are really intimate with this, because I'm not there every day, as to what needs to be done, and we'll continue to do that. Another commissioner I have came up, and I'm not sure this is really where this comes in, but I got an interesting phone call from a gentleman whose property traverses Perpino and Custer County, and he'd like to annex the property into Custer County. And I wasn't sure what the procedure on that is, and maybe I just need to get with Clint and ask him if that's something we do, or is that...
The simple...
I suspect the commissioners will make that decision ultimately.
I'm, I'm not speaking from a knowledge base, maybe Clint can help out here, but once, understanding is that the county lines are set by the legislature.
Yes.
And I think anytime you wanna change a county line, I would suspect it's going to be a very involved process. And, and, you know, it comes down, maybe it doesn't very much, but it comes down, as a lot of these arguments do, to what the principle is that, that's at stake. And I think it's something that we can look into, but I would suspect it's going to be a bit of a challenge. Counselor, now I'll get to you, Jackie.
No, I agree. It would be, it's something that'd have to be done at the state level, not on the county level.
Roger.
Yeah, just as in the side to that, when, when the district annexed, what, Glendale Vista, or, yeah, Copper Oaks Glendale Vista, it was a, it was a real process.
But that was a fire district.
Yeah.
Jackie?
It's probably Sit narrow in Centennial Ranch. Half of his property is probably in Centennial Ranch and half is in Perpino. When they subdivided Centennial Ranch, they do a flat. Well, some of those on the other side, half your thirty-five was on Perpino and half is on, what they want is they want, it doesn't affect the well or nothing, but see, they get two tax notices.
That's what it...
Uh-huh, and gets one, and so you have to be aware and pay your taxes in Perpino County and in Custer. And it depends on which side you wanna build on. But you still have all those areas of a three, five acre well and stuff. It's just, it's probably a hassle to remember to pay two tax bills.
Yeah, that was, I think he also was concerned about the ser, road services that are dead or cut.
It fits in, it fits in Centennial Ranch, but a lot of those aren't public routes.
Yeah, I understand. So I'll get back to him, so that is...
And there's another point, folks. We were just sat here and make a list, I bet we can brought it up with ten thousand owners around the state of Colorado that travel state line or a county line. And we just, that's just the way it is. So I don't see, you know, if he wants to pursue it, I think that's okay, but I think it's beyond us to, at this point. Anything else?
Uh, I've just been working with, um, like different departments on our performance appraisals and goals, and Jack and I are working, actually Jackie's working on, and I'm waiting to see new job description. So we've been working on some employee infrastructure, as I call it, getting our act together with that. That's all I have.
Well, what I've been doing, it seems like every day is busy. You know, last week, we had a, wasn't it last week? We went to Salida? Was it before, right? It's been since our last meeting. We met with the four other counties to try to reach some kind of an agreement on the budget for the district attorneys. Just for those things, it's kind of a mess. In the past, it's always been kind of a gentleman's agreement, that the majority will do, I mean, what the majority wants, the other counties will, will go with, because there's, we have a split. Last year, well, I guess it was just four counties, excuse me, but last year, Custer and Chaffey and Park all approved to go with the ten, for the twenty percent raise for the district attorney's office. We were first at ten percent. Fremont refused to do more than about ten percent. Uh, then we, first of the year, we added another ten percent. Our district attorney's office is shorthanded, they can't keep people. My sense is that we are not well-prepared to go to trial on some of the issues that we're, the, the cases that we're losing. We've done an awful lot of plea bargaining, but we have to decide as the four counties, what do we want to put into our budgets that will be for the district attorney's budget? Now, the budget for the district attorney is split on the basis of population. And I'm just shooting from my hip here, but I think we're around five percent of the total budget, something like that. We're, well, you're, you're pretty close by it. So we don't have, you know, we, we'd be the yippee-doe, but it doesn't cost us a whole lot. Fremont, I think feels very guilty, they got a lot of flack from us because they didn't support her master, and we're still working on where we're gonna be with the district's attorney's budget. Uh, I wanna go back to planning and do the building codes a minute. My feeling is that we have, we've had some meetings for people to respond to. I know that there were people in the audience that elected not to speak the other night. I know that they maybe felt intimidated, maybe they did, I don't know why, but anyway, I'm to the point that I just wanna get done with it, move on. I think we have, I think we've done a reasonable amount of due diligence, and we may, as we get into discussions on this item, we may reach something different. But my position right now is that, it's apparent to me that a lot of people are willing to publicly state their opposition to it, and I think I can make a decision. But that will come out about when we have our next meeting, but just for the discussion among you folks. And I wasn't prepared to make these comments on the building code, but that's kind of where I'm setting it. Other than that, I think that summarizes the main things I have. We're still looking, watching this fire burn area closely. We dodged a bullet last time. We've asked for many, many agencies and people to give us some kind of monitoring equipment, and we've, we've got nothing. The only plea, only ability we have to monitor the stream flow on South Harshcrabble is when it runs over that bridge. That, that's the only measuring device we have, and we're still pushing, trying to get something upstream. I don't know if any of you have been down through there, I've had a chance to see pictures. Cindy went down through it and took a whole lot of pictures on it. But basically, I've been told we're probably looking at a million dollars to replace the Forest Service part of that road, which would be a Forest Service expense, but that's just a ballpark figure I've heard batted around. We do have, I think, and Cindy helped me here, but I, it looks like we've got about probably three miles or more of some pretty severe damage. probably three miles or more of some pretty severe damage. Would that be your estimate, Cindy?
Yeah, it's blown out in five or six places in some of them. If they haul material in, even if they did, which Shigeru and Shannon, they won't, but it was just run downstream and add more downstream issues. So it's, it's going to stay closed for the next three years or so, I would guess.
I went down as far as I can, above the campground. There's a little draw from the south that comes in. That quote blew out. The creek was probably 10 feet below the road and maybe, I don't know, probably 20 yards, 30 yards across there. And all the debris come down out of this little side channel. It completely filled that and come over onto the road. There's places where the debris washed in and it's probably 30 or 40 feet deep. There are rocks down there as big as these tables that you folks are sitting at that washed down to the road. So it is a major problem. But we don't have any decisions yet, but we are looking and watching and seeing what makes most sense. And I guess that's it. I want to thank the folks at Wetmore for helping us keep up to date and their response when we had the flood. The fire department did a good job. Our road and bridge people spent a lot of time. The other night when we had a little, little issue down there, well, our road and bridge people were right on top of it and determined Roger and Gary are both key players in this. But Larry said, well, he thought things were fine, that there wasn't any crisis. So I think the Wetmore deal is ongoing, but I, I hope within a two-week period that we reach the 1st of September and we're out of the monsoon season. I don't know if that's going to happen sometimes, it's later, but having lived in Arizona a lot of years, usually by Labor Day, it's history. I guess that's what I had to report. Let's move on now to the attorney items. I apologize for being so windy.
I'm going to take just a minute here. We had a board meeting on August 1st, and I was asked some questions about the executive sessions this Board of County Commissioners have had by a gentleman who's been coming. Unlike a lot of citizens, they seem to get all their information about what's going on just from the newspapers. This gentleman actually has come to several meetings. He asked questions. He asked me a question about the executive sessions. I gave the same answer I've given every time I've been asked. They've all been conducted in accordance with our open meeting laws. And then Ms. Bubus asked me a question about personnel issues. And I answered her question. She wanted to know if the personnel, the executive sessions we had for personnel issues, if the employee had always had a right or been invited to attend those meetings. I told her no, and that was as far as it went. So then the headline comes out in this last issue of the Sentinel, "County Attorney Admits Illegal Executive Sessions," with an exclamation point, which is, first of all, responsible journalists don't need to use exclamation points to try to get a point across, but I don't care about that. I never admitted any illegal executive sessions, and I'm here to challenge Ms. Bubus and the Sentinel on this shoddy reporting, which I think they heard what they wanted to hear. They cherry picked my remark, never followed up on it, never asked me for any clarification. And that frankly really annoys me. And it's unfortunate that our other newspaper doesn't care enough about what's going on in the county to attend these meetings themselves. I think it would be useful to get another reporter here that could report on maybe some of the things that don't make it into the Sentinel. This recall effort, and I'm not taking a position on the recall. People are entitled to file a recall petition if they want. They can put whatever they want in there, even if it's not correct. And I will state unequivocally that what's in the recall petition regarding executive sessions is not correct. I've been involved in every executive session this board has had since they took their oath of office back on January 10. There has never been anything done contrary to the Colorado Open Meetings Law, which is also known as the Sunshine Act. The essence of that law is spelled out in the, the opening statement of that law. It says that open meetings during, or excuse me, during an executive session, there shall be no adoption of any proposed policy, position, resolution, rule, regulation, or formal action. And I'm here, I'll guarantee, I stake my entire professional career on this. I have a guarantee there has never been anything done in these executive sessions contrary to what it says in the law. It's very easy to say, oh, they're making decisions privately. When we come out of executive session, I'm required to certify that the discussion stayed on topic and that there were no decisions made, and there have not been any decisions made. And I would challenge anybody who says there have been decisions made contrary to law to come forward with some evidence. What decisions have been made? What have they done contrary to law? That offends me. You know, I volunteered to be the county attorney to help out John Naylor because I knew John Naylor for a lot of years in Pueblo. And I worked for the first six months as county attorney without being paid because I wanted to learn how to do the job. And I'm doing it not for the money. I'm doing it because I enjoy doing it, and I am doing it because I feel like I make a contribution to the county. But I don't enjoy being accused of illegal behavior. And I'm really tired. I mean, if it's illegal, then tell me what is illegal. I challenge the Sentinel to do that. I also challenge the Sentinel to actually print this verbatim. What's going to come out in the Sentinel is going to be something, "County Attorney Whines Like a Baby." And they'll cherry pick what I've said here to their advantage.
I don't write headlines. Just for the record, I don't write headlines.
I know you don't, but Jackie, you're the one that goes and reports it, and then your boss takes it from there.
I think, I don't think, Jackie, this is a direct.
I'm happy to quote you for being.
Okay, well, then let's put this the way what I'm talking about, because there has not been anything illegal about these executive sessions. It's in the recall petition. I think that I understand the petitions have been filed, but let somebody prove it. If somebody, I understand the Sentinel has an attorney that you're getting legal advice from. If your attorney would like to debate me in a public forum on this, I'll be happy to do it. Same thing about Dark Skies. I've always made a point to make it clear to everybody. I'm the vice president of Dark Skies, and I wear a dual hat. I'm the county attorney. But my allegiance, as far as this Board of County Commissioners is concerned, is to give them the correct legal advice. Yes, I'm an advocate of what we're trying to do, but I get tired when the Sentinel just keeps referring to it as a Dark Skies ordinance when that's not the case. But that's not what I'm here for. I'm here to talk about the executive sessions. I take great pride in being a professional. I have tried to conduct myself with professionalism and integrity. I've been an attorney for 46 years. I was a prosecutor for eight years. I was in private practice for 20 years. I was a magistrate, a judicial officer for the last 14 years. And when somebody accuses me of doing something illegal, that really offends me unless they can come forward with some kind of proof. So I wanted to make this statement on the record for those of you who are here. And if the Sentinel wants to respond to this, if somebody wants to debate me on this, I would be happy to do that.
Do you have this in writing, what you just read, or do I need to just transcribe it?
You can transcribe it from, I don't have it in writing. I didn't write all, actually, what I had in writing was a whole lot more incendiary than what I said.
Clint, let me remind you that she can pick up this recording later.
Okay.
Word for word.
Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate it. I don't have any other attorney items.
Thank you, Clint.
I would like to state that I've worked with Clint now for two years, two and a half years, three years, I don't know. I guess three years almost.
About just about.
I've never found him to give us advice that wasn't correct and illegal. There were some times that we asked him questions, and he would say, "I don't know. I'll have to get up to speed on it." And he did. Were times when we've asked him questions about some general issues, and almost always he's had a response to us. If not, he got back to us with the appropriate law citations. And Clint, I would, I would like to express also my appreciation for your service to our county the last few years. Thank you. Okay. Anything else on the commissioners? Is there any need for an executive session today? I see no need. Do you?
No.
Even though we needed to have one, we could, and we would.
We could.
Under old business, new and old business, we have the Hermit Bridge Project. And I think that's Gary or Roger, whichever.
Well, if we can hold a room for a little bit, I'm waiting for a couple individuals to show up.
Okay.
I have a couple of old, I have two old business issues I'd like to bring up.
Okay, we still have another one on, on the agenda. The mobile shredders.
That would be me. Let me get this in here. Currently, we have a shredder at the courthouse. It's probably 15 years old, and it shreds a lot. And it's starting to show that. There's a lot of items in my office and Laura's office, Human Services in particular, that need shredded. And so every once in a while, we have these mobile shredders come up, and they just do a big batch for us. We're ready to do that again, and we've got all of our stuff together. And total, it's going to cost us, most of it's in the basement. If we haul everything upstairs, it's going to be around $1,000. If we make them haul it upstairs, it'll be about 1,300. So they have given us a bid that we can have a container for $39 a month at the courthouse that anybody, any office can throw their shredding stuff in, and they'll come up and pick it up quarterly. And so I'm just wanting to see how you guys would feel about that, if you, if that would be something that we could look at. My office, we probably have, well, depending on the year, because a lot of the stuff that we shred is election stuff. We, we have to hold on to election stuff for 26 months, and then after that, we can shred it. So depending on the time of the year, depends on how much shredding we have. Human Services, Laura told me that they typically shred two big boxes a month, which she said is about three bags of, once it's shredded, that goes in our landfill. So I just want to know what you guys, what you think about this.
That's a good question. If I may, please. The $39 a month for the container, would it be an additional fee to come up and empty it? Or is that, is that just the $39 a month and quarterly?
They come up and empty it.
It sounds like a no-brainer to me. I wouldn't think we ought to do that.
Is it inside or outside?
You know, I'm not sure. I would say it's inside because we're putting stuff in there that we don't want people to get a hold of. So I would say it's probably going to be like maybe in one of our offices.
Is it noisy?
No, because it's just a container that we put everything in, and then they come up and get the whole container. They give us a certificate saying we shredded this much stuff for you so that we can keep it in our records. So if we're ever challenged about why we shredded this and what we've put in there. And then they bring, I don't know if they bring you a new container every quarterly or what.
I like the idea because these containers are secure. I've seen them before. So when you put it in there, it's not like you have confidential information waiting for someone that.
Right. You can't just open it up.
Could get to it. So it's basically contained what you put in there. I think it's a very good idea.
Do they offer some type of guarantee, like a certification that anything that gets put in the container gets shredded and destroyed? Just, I know from, from our office, we have to have that guarantee so that.
Yeah. So the, yeah, the first time that we did this, Debbie was still in office. And we, they could take it with them and shred it at their place down there, or they can shred it on-site. And she was a little nervous about them loading up all our, all these ballots and stuff and taking them away. And by the time we got done talking to them, we felt very comfortable with sending our stuff with them. And they have to give us a, we have a list of what's in there, and they sign off on it saying that it's been done and when it was shredded and the date and all that. And then we keep that so that we can prove that. But I don't know, I meant to look and see the cost of a new shredder. I don't really remember what we paid for that shredder, but it's going to go one of these days.
But then you're saying it goes to the landfill, which is.
Yeah, everything that we shred just goes to the landfill.
And this will be taken off, so.
It would be taken off.
I guess the thought I would have if we're going to do this on a three-month basis, maybe when they come up to shred, we should make that service available to the general public at a minimal fee. So if they have stuff that they want to shred, that they haven't shredded, that they could commit at that time and have it shredded. I don't know if you saw the news this last week, but I think it was on Friday, they had a big shred the letter or something it was called on, I believe it was in Pueblo. Did you, any of you folks see that on the news? They shredded thousands of pounds of paper, and people were bringing it in from the community to have it shredded. We may not have enough interest up there, but this would also potentially give the private individual a place to have their shredding done that would be handled in a confidential manner and wouldn't go to the landfill.
Well, I think.
Sustainable Ways does that once a year. They ask for donations to pay for it.
Who does?
Sustainable Ways does it at the school parking lot once a year.
Like in the spring or something, huh?
I guess my, my concern would be we're probably being charged by weight, looking at what you propose, so.
Yeah, if, when we do it the way that we're getting ready to do, they charge us by weight. With this container, I think anything that's in the container, that's just what. And if we get, any extra containers we get are $10 a month extra, so I figure they must be charging us 10 bucks for the container and 30 bucks for their service, probably.
Well, yes, ma'am.
Do you have to sign a contract for a certain number of, period of time? A year, two years, something like that?
Um, that I do not know. If we sign that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think you'd sign a con, I don't know. It's a good question, and I can find out.
I didn't hear your question.
If you have to sign a contract for any specific times for these containers, do you, can you just do it for a three-month period and decide you don't like?
And try it out, yeah.
Well, I think we can, but at the same time, I, I think we're kind of getting deep in the weeds. It's something we have to solve. We have to get rid of either with our own shredders or with the commercial service. I agree with your question, it's something we need to find out, but.
So do you want to dig a little deeper?
I don't see it as a deal breaker. Anything else? Okay, Jay?
I have two old item issues to discuss. The first is, a couple of board meetings ago, Ben Lent came to us to talk about joint forces for weeds. I'd like to suggest, we mentioned that we'd like to have a workshop on that, and if it's possible, I'd like to pick a date to do that. That's item number one. Item number two is the damage that was done to Dr. Smith's airport hangar. Kevin Taylor very generously volunteered to do the repairs. The estimate of the cost of the materials is $161.64, and I would like to be able to approve the expenditure of $161.64 to buy the material and publicly commend Kevin Taylor for volunteering to do the repair work.
Well, that's something an item that you can take care of through your airport budget, as you can, but I think it would be a, pardon?
Dallas said that the airport wasn't going to pay for it, wasn't going to come out of the airport budget. So I don't know.
It needs to.
I got news for Dallas, we're not going to do it as, I don't think as a Board of County Commissioners, but we may have to amend the airport budget after they make expenditures and transfer some funds to it. And I think that's the proper way to do it from an accounting standpoint and so forth. But we can do it, I guess you're suggesting we just take it out of, what account would you, would you like to take this out?
I wasn't suggesting anything.
No, no, I'm serious. What account would you like to come out of?
The general fund. It could come out of, we don't want to come out of the airport fund as we're going to come out of. I mean, it was an airport issue. It was an airport error that caused the damage. I mean, Mr. Taylor, if we didn't have, if we had to pay for that, I suspect. I mean, Mr. Taylor, if we didn't have, if we had to pay for that, I suspect it'd be multi-hundred dollars more. But his kindness and generosity is, is wonderful. I think we, I think that we've been fussing around with this thing for years now, it's time to get it resolved. So, why don't I just go back to Dallas and say, "It's coming out of your budget, let's get it done, and I want it reported within thirty days of..."
And please tell him that at the end of the year, if we need to, that we will amend his budget.
I'm meeting with him tomorrow.
This is, this is a very standard procedure.
Um, we're gonna, I was meeting with him tomorrow to discuss his budget for next year, 'cause he needs a little help with that, and, and I will make sure that we take care of that properly.
What was the amount on it?
It's a hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-four cents for a major...
Do you want a motion to that effect?
No, I don't think we need one, I think it's, uh, it's gonna stay airport needs to pay. I just wanted to let you know...
No, no, I think we need to do it, let's, I make a motion and we get the thing done.
Second.
I agree with that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried.
Okay, and, and if we could send, we send a workshop to Ben Lent, I'm done with that one. I don't wanna miss one, tied with it, it's over here.
Do we go ahead and continue with the repair then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, you're gonna pay for the repair, thank you for that, but you do it.
And what is the, uh...
Did we have any dates from Ben yet?
No, we didn't get anything back on Ben, or did we?
What?
Ben's resigning.
He is, he's done like the twenty-fifth or whatever, so... But I've been trying to get ahold of him to find out exactly what's going on, and I haven't been able to get ahold of him, so...
What is your urgency on this?
That we're losing Ben in another couple of weeks, and we want to get something going with the weeds if, if we can. It's no urgency, it's just that we was brought up, we agreed to do a workshop at least a month ago, and if we wanna do a workshop, let's do it. If we don't, we could just table it and let it go the way it is.
Well, I think I agree with you to do the workshop. I also want to know, making a statement to you folks, I don't know if you heard in one of our other meetings, but the NRCS has been handling all the weed control as they normally have. I mean, they've spent almost all their monies that they have. And from the county standpoint, Roger and Gary, I think, are working on it from our standpoint. And I don't think we've got at this time, in spite of the general feeling, I don't think we have a tremendous weed crisis, other than just doing on what we're doing, because we've already, we've, they've expended the money that they had from the upper arc, and that's what we've normally done.
We, uh, we have gotten a great handle on the weeds, and we need to get that, that thing going again, and I'll get with Carol to get the weed board fired up again, so we can have a meeting.
Well...
Uh, Gary just picked up, uh, a gentleman to spray that normally we deal with Fremont County. Uh, Gary just went with a private contractor.
We approved that.
Well, I spoke with Janet Repetti with Fremont County, and she said that what got approved was an interlocal agreement for Fremont County to come into Custer County and do the spraying. But she's leaving Fremont County, so at this point in time, she, she suggested we use this individual that spoke to start spraying this way, um, at least for this year, since they're in the transition of a new weed director down there in Fremont County. So, and this individual that did our, or is gonna spray for Custer County, has done spraying in Custer County for Fremont County, for the weed, weed, uh...
Was either one spraying last year?
Pardon?
Was either one spraying last year or two years ago?
I don't know necessarily if he maybe sprayed, yeah, in Fremont or in Custer County last year, but he has sprayed in Custer County.
Why? You brought it up, Jay, what would be your, your preference?
To have the workshop.
I'd like to do the workshop that we agreed to do a month ago, we just haven't done.
I don't think it was a month ago.
Okay, we're gonna say no.
Okay, when would you like to have the workshop?
You said Ben is leaving next week?
No, I don't know, do you know when Ben...
Twenty-eighth.
It's next week.
And twenty-eighth?
Monday, Monday, so, if he's gone on Monday, that's two Mondays, yeah.
Sounds right, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
So, you got a hold of next week, so we have one week.
I'm on the twenty-second on Tuesday, twenty-second, if he's available.
You want from when?
I was suggesting August twenty-second, if he's available.
I'll be out of town that week.
That'll work.
You're after hold.
Just that we get to the point, we have so many meetings. Last week we had what, or week before, we had six meetings in the first week of the month, in four days?
That's what we're getting paid for, isn't it?
Okay, well, set the date, whatever you'd like. Maybe you need to get ahold of Ben.
Yeah.
I can do it at any time.
I'll tell you what, let me, let me do this, let me get ahold of Ben. Did you try and get ahold of Ben?
I did.
And you haven't heard back? All right, let's wait to get back from Ben, and we'll circulate an email without making any decisions or anything. We'll pick a date.
I think also, but as we do this, so I think we need to also include our weed board in this discussion.
I agree with that completely.
And as a point of order, Roger, and the weed board, as I understand it, there are only three people that are not affiliated with a government organization.
I, yeah, I think that's right.
And so, the other, then they're an advisory group. But, um, we have to address that too, I think. Okay? All right, next item you got, is that all you got? Jay?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay.
You're up.
Um, I had some last-minute, uh, updates on old business on the three-nineteen grant, and, uh, just a couple of comments, 'cause there's some folks in Wetmore here. But we did try to get some funding that Bob had mentioned on alert notification. Fremont County and Custer County were turned down by the state, but Fugel County got two-hundred thousand dollars. Um, so, we're fighting that fight, trying to get some stream gauges, rain gauges, and some, something besides waters over the bridge, we got no water. Um, and then, Ruth Roper has been instrumental in bringing in Team Rubicon this weekend. They're gonna be working down on Greenwood Road. I think they're working with Red Bridge to get some signs up, so that it's level traffic only there. But Team Rubicon is veteran volunteers that are coming down. Um, I think there's about forty guys that are staying in the community center. And so, it's just a veteran volunteer organization. And those are the kinds of things we're getting on recovery.
Yes, I am.
The three-nineteen grant, I brought some copies, 'cause I told Brenda I would get this to you yesterday, and I lied, because, uh, we have two back-to-back subterranean missions just earlier.
Should be a copy in here for you.
Um, but the, the draft, she may have gotten them for you, I made copies. But the draft budget and the draft scope of work on that grant came in, um, August first, and Alyssa and I have been pretty concerned about this being out of our scope of expertise and, and out of our capacity to be able to do this. The original grant was for three-hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars. They are offering us in the budget, three-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars, so they gave us about an extra sixty grand. This grant helps clean up the twenty-twelve Wetmore fire, foundations, metal, uh, burnt trees, anything that might get down in the stream, become debris there. So primarily, it's the three-eighty-nine, three-ninety intersection there, um, bryces, browns, there's several homes in there. And, uh, so what this letter is, and this request is, Alyssa and I had a conference call yesterday with the folks at COCO, they've worked on most of this, they drafted the grant for us. They're the subject matter experts, we took a look at the procurement policy, and so what we're asking you to consider is that we contract with them to be the grant management under my supervision, since I am the applicant, the Office of Emergency Management, and that rather than going out for a bid, um, that we think that they are a single-source, uh, you know, one-stop shopping here, we don't think anybody's gonna be able to match the groundwork and the subject matter knowledge and things, so... So, there's a two-page letter, Alyssa hasn't, and I haven't signed it yet, because I finished it about seven o'clock last night, um, we got sidetracked. And I have asked Tamara Allen at the Public Health Department, um, if she could fast-track the contract and try to get us a, a contract by August thirty-first for you to review and sign, 'cause the county commissioners would be the ones signing the contract. She said we're really pushing it, and her email on that, that they're gonna do their best to do that. And the original scope of work, I believe, was May first through July first, so it was, or, it was three months, so... Um, but it cleans up two to eight properties, we do have to get permission from the property owners to enter. I know Linda Lorraine and Del Paulson, um, have talked to their attorney, and they've got concerns with the Browns' property, because that's where the trees are coming down on power lines. And you see that three to four years after a fire, now they start falling over, 'cause the root systems have collapsed and were at the five-year mark. So, um, I think it's an important project to move forward. I think it helps the community of Wetmore and Greenwood, who just have been hammered and hammered and hammered. And I, uh, I know there's a lot of stress and anxiety and dealing with this, so, um, I don't know that we need a decision today, but I'd really like you to consider the sole source of the group, if the state is agreeable to that, the Public Health Department.
One issue I have, I would like to see, you mentioned the properties. I would like to see those properties identified, and the general, uh, at least in a general sense, what's going to be removed from those properties, because I see three-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars as a lot of money.
So, if you see primary activity number one in the work plan, the contractor shall produce a list of priority sites for restoration. Jackie Hobby has already worked with the folks at COCO to kind of identify those. Um, I don't have, I have my maps back at the office and names, but I, I can't give you the exact name, but there are eight foundations, correct? There are subjects that need to be drained and crushed.
How many acres?
Uh, the project on, I think it's on the same exhibit B here, it's twenty-two... That's all one of these, um, maybe it's on a tablet here. It's twenty to... And it depends, again, on cooperation. If we don't spend it all, we don't spend it all, but Tamara gave extra money in case we need it. Um, if we don't use it, we send it, send it back. Um, let me find that for you. I know it's very specific in the application, two to eight properties.
Well, if it's, and you get this information...
And twenty-five and up to three-hundred-and-thirty-seven acres of debris removal. And because you're considering asbestos and other things, it's not just, you know, hauling it off to the landfill, no, that'll go to Custer County or anything.
So, Karen, the main concern that I'm getting now from the property owners in Wetmore is, my neighbors' trees are falling over, they're gonna hit my fence, they're gonna hit my house. And most of my, most of the phone calls I get is from one certain property, and these people that own this property do not have the money or the capability or to clean up their property. Yes, I'm not saying that we should go in there and, and, but we need to give a hand up here, because we got a mess, and we need to give a helping hand.
And our match is fourteen thousand dollars, and that's gonna be all in kind. And we may have, exceed that on the in-kind as well.
And who's the in-kind from?
The in-kind will be volunteers on the reseeding to CDOT standards, and we will also be working with CDOT and San Isabel Electric to clear those dead trees within the power line right-of-ways and the highway right-of-way.
So, what's gonna cost twenty thousand bucks to reseed twenty acres?
I said twenty to three-hundred-and-thirty-seven acres.
Three-hundred-and-thirty-seven.
Up to, but volunteer labor on the FEMA is twenty-five dollars and something an hour, I think it's twenty-five...
I agree with, I agree with what we're trying to do. My concern, and again, I voiced this before, initially when we come in, we had a lot of predictions that were made on the flooding we were going to have. Uh, COCO was very concerned about that little dam there in Hardscrabble, which probably contains less than a third of an acre of water. They've identified how, they thought that the, the Beaver Dam's on Ninety-sixth were gonna wash out the road if we had flood come down there, they just broke. Uh, there's a lot of things that we looked at that could have been, but, uh, in retrospect, I, I've not seen that degree that, sure, we were giving a worst-case scenario, but I, I'm... This is what C, uh, COCO does for a living, is they work these grants. And if we're creating our money's worth, I'm very much in favor of it. But when we have just a single source, I, I, I think maybe I'm wrong, my colleagues can, can say what they want, but I would like a little more detail of what we're going to do, just not a rubber stamp.
Well, they would draft a scope of work, and, uh, it would also have to be approved by the state, you know? We can certainly send it out for, for a bid and have some other folks that don't have the, we do this for a living.
I'd like...
I understand that, Bob, but, um, also...
I'm not arguing, I appreciate where you're coming from.
Okay, well, I have a couple more things to add. And that is that it's, it's economic development, it's light when you move in, and I think it's, you know, I, I, I appreciate what people in Wetmore and Greenwood have to say as well, but, you know, to, to suggest that we might do nothing when this opportunity is then handed to us, it seems, uh, pretty much like a no-brainer to me.
I'd like to see if either of my colleagues will comment.
Uh, I've been involved with COCO in the past with this, and I, I don't have the same concerns. I think this is an excellent opportunity, especially if our matching grant is in kind, and if we have folks that have come in and cleaned up our area, and make it better for us. I don't know how to say no to that.
I have no experience with GoCo grants, um, so for me, it would be important to see their scope of work.
You've got the scope of work at exhibit B in the package.
Yeah, I read this.
I get vocal credit, they did, for what they got done, we did, I think, folks in Wetmore, got a lot of debris cleaned out of that creek that would have caused those problems that the Ninety-sixth Bridge, if COCO hadn't been in a leadership position to accomplish that. Uh, I'm just, I'm just trying to be, from a sound business decision on this, what makes sense, and, and I'm, we can go from there. And I agree, city, we'll just... I also think we're setting a precedent. We come in here and say, "Well, we cleaned this up the next fire we had," and those folks say, "Well, you went and got a grant to clean them up, you have to get a grant to clean them."
If we had fire codes, you would set a precedent that you'd have to clean up after a fire.
And why couldn't, now, this, this group that's coming in, the veterans, they're gonna be working on private ground, cleaning stuff up, is that right?
They're gonna be working...
Retag, so what I want to say...
Team Rubicon?
Rubicon, yeah. And they'll be...
They're gonna be working Saturday and Sunday, and they're not gonna be working on any of those burnt trees, they're gonna be working on debris in the creek bed, and I believe some sandbagging and some, uh, um, gideon baskets.
And why aren't they, what, if this is an issue with an individual that can't do it, why couldn't they help that person?
The, the project this weekend with Team Rubicon, um, is not for this at all. Um, it, it won't be for this weekend. If we wanna try to get on Team Rubicon's schedule to do something later down the road, you know? I, I don't think Team Rubicon is a subject matter expert in doing, you know, volunteer work. They've asked very specifically for some traffic, uh, barricades and things, for them to be willing to do the work that they are this weekend, and they are also in high demand as a volunteer agency, so... Um, they felt badly because they had turned us down and gone to Beulah after the Beulah flood, when they were gonna come help us, and after our flood, uh, July thirtieth, I got a call, I think I got a text about eleven o'clock that night from Tracy at Team Rubicon, and I called the next day, and they said we really wouldn't be able to help the community up, and so Ruth's been organizing that with Jason and COCO.
Okay.
Um, I'll work to get that, um, final contract, so Quentin, everyone can review it. Um, I'm gonna push for the end of August, first part of September, and, and then a contract, but if you think, you know, you wanna put this out for a full RFP, then, then we'll have to get moving on that.
You had a couple of items?
Nope, that's it. I'm at two o'clock meeting, so...
Donna, who's got the floor, please?
I know.
Do you want to eat right?
No.
All right, you want a five-minute break, or do you wanna finish with your item, Alvis? Is this regarding Cindy?
No.
Okay. Let's take a five-minute break, and I mean by five minutes, in a week, because we have some people that have to leave, they've got one thirty-five. The next item on the agenda, let's see, um...
It's me as old business.
I'm lost.
Well, you want to do, why is it do the... Or do you wanna do the...
We've, we've done two old businesses, our, no, we, we're, uh, let's do, Donna, how long do you need on your...
I don't need longer than that.
Okay. Let's do Donna, and then we'll, we'll do the landfill, and then we're gonna get to the people here on the, uh, bridge project.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yep.
Okay, Donna, you're on the agenda.
Uh, I'm trying to remember if it was the last meeting, it could have been two meetings before. Brenda brought up, uh, her concern on whether we should be applying for a new GoCo grant, and that was regarding, uh, playground for the Wetmore community? And Jay, you said you were gonna try to meet with people in Wetmore?
I did.
Okay.
Um, I met with the folks down there, and, um, the consensus was, we would sure like it, but the number of children...
the number of children is minimal, so they said if we feel that it wouldn't cost the county any money, it would be a great thing, but let's not spend a bunch of county money on it, was basically the consensus.
Because I think it was a match of about 4,500?
Yeah, something like that.
My first concern turned back to the liability playground equipment that the counties invested.
Insurance would cover it just like they cover everything else that we do.
But in our insurance, they'll cover it, but if we were to get into $100,000 or $200,000 lawsuit and lose, then eventually our premium goes up. So, you know, it's covered as an item, but it does come back to us, you've seen in the insurance, that's how we've gone up and down every year.
Well, I'm just gonna say that any other playground that I've seen that's on government property, like say, where the school, has a fence, and it's a controlled area, but it's whether or not you wanna go ahead and commit to matching, matching money.
I don't think the issue should be the insurance part, and that's why we have insurance.
Is anybody left here from Wetmore?
Can I finish, please?
Excuse me, no, I just saw people leaving, they didn't want to run out. Go ahead, Krista.
I was just saying that, you know, if we feel that it's good for the county, insurance is part of what we do, and it's just, I mean, it's like when we buy a new truck, we don't say, well, how much more insurance are we gonna have because we bought a new truck? I think we need to, if it's right for the county, it's good for our citizens, we ought to do it, and if it's not, let's not, that's my opinion.
But your response from the Wetmore community group was to learn how children...
There aren't a lot of children in Wetmore, they would love to have it because people stop by the side of the road, but if it's, and their concern was, we don't wanna spend county money on that if it's not necessary, that was basically the response I got. That was the response I got.
What's the deadline for the green?
Um, I think it's November 1st.
To put it in?
Yes, to apply.
I guess my thoughts on this is that if the community doesn't think they really need it, it was a high priority item. I don't think at this point in time that we would push it.
Wait, wait.
I mean, I agree with that comment, I just reported that, what I learned.
Okay, next.
We'll take it off your list to do it.
Okay.
Okay, the other request that came to us was from Alyssa Clough, who is from the Gateway to Success. She's already in our annex building on Fridays from 12 to 4, and she was asking for more time, so, and this was on Fridays only. And I know when we last spoke with Tim, he was looking to add more hours to his schedule, so I don't know if he'd wanna commit more of the annex time. He was gonna get back to us, so I don't know that I'm comfortable in saying she can have more time right now, because we haven't heard back from Tim.
And Tim stopped by and talked to me about it, because I was asking him about, he said, my hours are from 8 to noon on Fridays, and I said, well, what about after 4? And he said, that would be fine with me, but that's up to you guys if there were, I didn't know if there were other people scheduled after 4:00 PM. And I asked her if she wanted time beyond 4, and I never heard back from her, so I'm thinking she does, but...
Do we have a published schedule of the use of the building at this point?
There's a calendar on it.
Okay, well, I have to see, okay.
So it would just be used committing?
I just, I'm hesitant to commit Friday after 4 because we only have a limited amount of time they can meet there. Now, and we kicked the public out of having a meeting there on Friday afternoon by putting her in there.
Well, the other thing is the cleaning people show up at 4:00 on Friday afternoon to clean the annex.
I'd suggest we take it under advisement. Does that, does it agreeable?
She's waiting for a response from us.
Well, like I said, I asked her if after 4 was an option, and I have not heard back from her, so...
I'll see her back for more than that.
Yeah.
That's all I had.
Do you wanna move this to the next meeting?
What about the fair board? Or did you already did?
That's new.
Oh, okay.
All right, is this, any other old business? Okay, now we're gonna go to Rusty, because this is old business on the landfill. We were talking about a truck pickup from the use, Rusty has some bids, and I'd like to turn the floor review at this time.
Yeah, I guess I'm really not clear on how much money we really wanna spend on a pickup truck. Used pickups are still pretty expensive, and they have a lot of miles. New pickup at Wilcoxen, where we bought that, Roden Bridge bought that GMC last year, this pickup is $39,835, and we can get it for $130.
And that is a, I saw this is 2017, brand-new pickup, and my guy's for something, is that two-wheel or four-wheel?
Four-wheel drive.
No, four-wheel drive at 30 grand is about 60% of what it would cost you on the open market.
So it would be 29 something.
Well, and when you approached us the last time, we were looking at your budget, and there was like $14,000 that was not gonna be used in this budget this year.
He's got two more bids, there's a...
And this one is from Salida, and it's the same pickup as this one, and our price would be 31, the same pickup.
So that's 2000.
29 for the one.
24. Did 2,500 HD?
Yeah.
That's 24.
And this was a diesel and the gas pickup. The 2015, they want 43,000 for, with 53,000 miles. So used pickups are still real expensive, and they have, you know, miles on them, so...
Can we get any trade-in?
I think it just depends on what we wanna do.
Can we get any trade-in?
Really don't have anything to trade in, because the pickup that I'm using now, the mechanics actually have it running fairly well. Dentist had to take it to Salida today with some plastic fails for recycling, and it's actually running fairly well right now, but it'd be a great landfill pickup, took it around the landfill.
Okay, what's your thoughts, folks?
So, what do we have budgeted?
14. That we would take, which is actually for an engine for the compactor, which we can use that.
So we'd be needing an additional...
16.
Before that other...
Did you catch Donna and Tom before she got to the bridge?
I'll talk to Donna about it, because she's been gone, so...
How does your landfill income look this year compared to last year?
It was up, last board meeting, it was up 12,000 over last year.
Over last year? See, last year...
For this time of year.
18,000 from breaking even, so if we continue on that, you may break even this year.
Possibly. Yeah, I don't know if you wanna just wait until the end of the year and see where we're at, or what you wanna do.
Hopefully, do you need those, is this something you need now, or can we wait till the end of the year?
Depends on pickup that I'm trying, I guess. It's kinda touch and call.
He's driving one now, it's not...
Barely going, I understand that.
We just have to, we have to haul that trailer to Salida, and then the other trailer to Pueblo, and then plus, I'm gonna redeck our trailer and use that to haul the skid stair back and forth, and we're doing cardboard fails, so a three-quarter ton pickup would be perfect for that. So I don't have to rely so much on Roden Bridge to haul it out and come back and get it, that skid stair. We could just do it ourselves when it's available for us.
So you have a couple options, because you have to look at out, right, purchase versus financing. And maybe we can afford the financing through the deposit of 14, so I'm gonna ask if we can wait and talk to Donna, if that's okay? She'll be back next week, and let's have that discussion, I'll set up a meeting, and maybe we can look at putting Donna through 2,000 and seeing what the payments will be.
Good. Good idea. I agree with that.
Okay.
Donna will be back next time.
Do that, put that on the agenda appropriate time.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
We need this information.
I would just bring it to the meeting.
Anything else? Can you hold yours when we go to Roden Bridge, because the other folks are here, Jack?
What happened to my customer? You must be fine. Yeah, well, I'm good.
Okay, let's bring over, let's go to our Hermit project, if we can. Apologize for having you folks wait. Sometimes it's like trying to hurt cats.
Nice to see you.
All right, Jimmy, thanks for being here. And Jimmy's the project leader for this bridge project. And what we're gonna try and do is come up with some reasons and explain why this project come in, you know, the estimates could be higher than what we initially thought, and hopefully, Jimmy can get some light on that. And I did print off a, sorry, a project estimate, pretty similar to the commission's, that Amanda came up with, so you can see some numbers in there. And we were just talking, I guess, these are high-end numbers for this project, so there are some dollar amounts that can be shaved off.
Well, I guess I can explain how I came up with the construction estimate. Basically, what I did was I pulled some bid tabs from other CDOT projects and tried to find some that had similar quantities and used those unit prices, and that's what I based it on. I just used pretty much Google Earth to measure lengths, widths, depths, that kinda stuff, to kinda come up with the numbers that I have. One of the questions that Gary mentioned was like, 20,000 seems high for mobilization. It's high for a local contractor that is located in Silver Cliff, for example, maybe Seifer. It's not that high for someone coming from Pueblo, you know, it's pretty realistic. So unless you, you know, put it out for bid, you don't really know where some of these numbers are coming from, but where they'll come in at, you know, but basically, that's where I pulled these unit prices from, and I printed out some of the bid tabs that I used to come up with these numbers, and I would, for example, this one had, you know, asphalt patching, and the engineer's estimate was $200 a ton, there was one contractor that came in at 500 a ton, another contractor that came in at 417 a ton. Well, I kinda averaged those out, and I used 371 in my number. So that's what I did in balancing, trying to come up with a number for unit prices and just utilize some bid tabs.
This initial asphalt is what you're looking at, number 13?
Um, yes.
And that is for the asphalt, or is that for...
That's, that's, that's a soup, yeah, it is for the asphalt, and I was assuming a four-inch mat on that one, so I don't...
What's it gonna cost to have it installed?
What's that?
What will it cost to have the asphalt laid?
That's the install cost.
Well, that's the install.
That is the install cost, yeah. So some of other, the bid tabs are all install costs, because those are other projects that went out for bid, and that's how they came in, so they're all install costs. As far as, because this is a CDOT-funded project, or CDOT funding is touching this project, because you've also applied for DOLA funding, there's a lot of requirements administrative-wise, and I did get in touch with Jimmy, and he gave us this, a copy of this document that you have, as to what the, what your, what the local agency is responsible for, what CDOT's responsible for, and what I would assume that we would be, or an engineering firm would be responsible for. And so I just printed, I just printed one out, but that kinda gives you an idea on administrative-wise what the requirements are and how thick the paperwork gets for CDOT projects.
What, what was your width on this?
30, I believe. It was 30 by 100. I just kinda looked at Google Earth to see where the patches were, so I, it was about 30 foot wide by 100 foot long and a four-inch mat.
And we did be with Christie Dune with DOLA here about a week ago, because once we submitted this application to DOLA for this grant, to offset the monies that's not gonna be covered by the CDOT grant, I tried to get some kind of an idea when Brenda and I met with her, what chances we had at getting this grant, and she couldn't elaborate on that whatsoever. There's, it's pretty competitive, I mean, we've got about as good as chances anyway. We worked very closely with her, and if she can find a way to do it, she'll do it for us. Well, I think she's gonna try and do that for us, but once again, that's not guaranteed, but... That's my feeling. And she led me to believe that she hasn't been answered for us around October 1st, whether we can receive this extra money. It's kinda where we're at with it. It's kinda, we can see that...
What does LS, SY, and CY stand for?
Lump sum, square yards, cubic yards, linear feet.
Thank you.
Now, I see on eight, you've got 120 feet of culvert.
Mm-hmm. I assumed...
So that would go 40 feet?
Yes, I assumed three at 40 feet.
Now, I did speak with Skyline Steel down in Canyon, and they said that they've got culverts six-foot diameter, 16 gauge that need CDOT specs, and their price was 96 a foot.
Just for the material?
Yeah.
You've got labor in there, too.
Labor as far as, you're, now that's...
These are all, includes labor and materials costs.
Okay.
And also, these numbers pulling from the CDOT cost, and it's also included probably their DIPS vacant increases, too, so you're seeing that.
And what is the type 3 cord rail?
Uh, type 3 is just really a typical one, it's got, it's all wood.
Is that the ones you see about this wide, and they're steel?
Yes, they're steel, and they have wood posts.
Okay, now, 30 feet, we have to have 24 for driving surface? Well, as far as these figures and these numbers go, Bob, I mean, this is just to give us an idea, when we actually get closer to the project, if we can actually do it, it's most likely not gonna be three, six-foot diameter culverts, the length is gonna vary, we're, you know, because we want a little bit of surface area for walking and things like that, so... That's what I'm asking. Yeah, once we get closer to the project, we're gonna make sure that we've got enough width for walking. What's our, what's our right-of-way width there? I don't have any idea, I'll be, probably they'll tell us with a 60-foot right-of-way. 60? But we'll make sure that we've got enough length on this. Well, we do, I just wanna be sure, that's why I was asking, if it's a 24-foot driving surface, and we have 40 foot, that gives us 16 feet extra to play with. Right. So, and the driving surface, I'm assuming we'll have to line it with what we have on either side of the bridge, and I do wanna be sure that we do have, it's kind of a petty issue, but I wanna be sure we've got enough width that the people can walk, they're out there walking their dogs and everything else, and we've got, we're safe.
Yeah, these numbers are really just basically off of the Google Earth image, and that's why I got the dimensions, so that...
Well, I think we're fine, but I'm just wanna be sure that we have enough room to...
Yeah, we should, yeah.
For the pedestrian access.
Gary, do we have to up our request from DOLA?
Based on this, we may, just to be on the safe side, and being as we can go up to $200,000, I don't think that'll be an issue.
Well, we have a 50% match.
Yeah, so we can, we can go up to 100,000.
40.
40,000. And our initial request was for 100,000, so that's what we're gonna need to do.
Yeah, and you haven't talked to Christie again?
No, I've been gathering some information. So we're at 280 then?
Yeah.
Roughly that we can afford, and the other would be 20,000, and I think we can save that potentially in what you've estimated here.
I think it's a possibility for sure, because you have some very competent local contractors, so I think that's definitely a possibility.
And if we can go with the locals, if you have 20,000, could go down to $20,000 for mobilization, so there's 19,000 in savings right there.
Well, I, Gary, you had mentioned earlier that the possibility of you guys actually re... removing the asphalt and then taking that line item out of the, out of the bid schedule.
Yeah, so there's, there's some ways we can save on this total project.
Also, you have a contingency ten percent.
Right. And that's just because I, I spent about a half a day looking at bid tabs and not knowing exactly, having a surveyor...
You probably have that easy way to...
I just kind of want to go back and look at Amanda's estimate. And I, I agree with it, uh, the way it's broke down, obviously, we get into the actual design, it's broke down much further, but, um, just comparing that against what the original estimate you put into your grant to the base construction, uh, twenty thousand dollar mobilization, you're thinking there's three hundred dollars for a mobilization cost.
Now, what would that entail?
That would entail bringing the equipment out there, build offices, um, setting up temporary electric if necessary to work. There's a lot of things that go into the mobilization cost.
What would entail bringing the equipment out?
Yes.
So if you have somebody that's gonna, uh, install a culvert, we have to pay them to come out, travel time with their equipment to come out to install it? They don't haul it to the job themselves?
No, they haul it to the cost. There's a cost for them to truck it there.
And that's what their mobilization is.
That's what mobilization is.
It actually has a lot of pieces in it.
Okay, uh, probably in the mobilization, you're gonna have, your general contractor is gonna have this mobilization, um, the asphalt. I don't know how, depends on how, the typical, if you allow a general contractor that's doing his own asphalt, there is a subconsultant for that. They got mobilization cost. Traffic control has a mobilization cost. If you have curb and gutter, those people have a mobilization cost. So there, there's people that have to bring their equipments out, their forms, their equipment, et cetera. And that's what is included there. Also included in the mobilization, like I said, is if there's temporary build offices, I don't anticipate them something.
How long is this gonna take to do?
I, can you shut the road down? That's one question I was gonna ask.
Yes, well, shut the road down. How long is it?
If you just shut the road down, that will reduce your traffic control costs. That'll also expedite the project. I think you're probably looking at, on the far side, probably sixty days.
How many?
Sixty days?
Sixty.
Sixty days? We just won't quit now because we can't close that road for sixty days.
I don't know. I, I haven't designed it, so I can't tell you what it entails, so... But yeah, that's probably on that.
Definitely being able to close it is most definitely gonna impact your cost. Your, your cost is gonna go down significantly for closing the road. Now, opening it, you're, you're really not gonna be able to have it half-open.
Now, now, because this is a CDOT-funded project, is the road closure go up significantly? I mean, the amount of time that it's gonna be closed, the project itself, you know, the time that it takes?
If you close it, to make it get in and have no traffic control, it goes quicker. But like I said, I, there's, I, I can't tell you what that contractor's gonna face. I know if you have demo, you're gonna have to deal with, you're gonna have to put it back in, which paving, which concrete work, concrete work's gonna probably take, you have to have a cure time of at least, you know, two weeks.
Well, see, that's why we were hoping to go with a four-sided block culvert because it would have, uh, it was had integrated wings and head wall with it, so...
So if they had a prefab, you could drop it in soon.
Yes. So we're hoping...
I mean, that's a pretty big prefab, but I mean, if you can, have you put those kind in before or...
No, it would be the contractor that would be responsible for...
Right. But do you have any around that area that large?
This structure like this?
Oh, like the, the one you're talking about?
No, we, no, not with the exception of...
That is, that is quicker if you do have a prefab that's gonna go in there. Otherwise, you're gonna have to put in some retaining walls and go all the way, you know, down to frost and put your footers, all that kind of stuff. So that would save on time. They may be a little bit more expensive upfront, but it'll save on time.
Well, it was sixty-five thousand. But the thing of it is, if we go with the three quart, okay, quarter gate with metal pipes, the head walls and wing walls, we're still, according to your estimate, we're still like a forty-five, so for an extra twenty thousand, we're gonna eliminate the need to shut the road down for near areas alone, so...
I'm very not sure. I'm hearing all kinds of numbers. I'm looking at numbers, I'm hearing, but that really could only be a thousand. I'm hearing, well, if we do this, it'll be that. I mean, can I rely on this? Is this, is this the number?
Well, I haven't been retained to do anything just yet. This is just a really upfront, so something that we could all talk to and have this discussion.
And your cost being what on this one?
It's down below.
Is that the...
There's, there's surveying, there's construction...
Twenty-two thousand, is that?
That, that's construction, I believe.
Well, now, the county's got a licensed surveyor onboard, Kit, correct?
Yes or no?
Well, I was, when the first project bid estimate, it was, um, it was putting in the Kit to do the survey since he's a licensed surveyor.
Well, let me bring you up to date on Kit. We wanted to do some surveying at courthouse, this for a foot brake survey, and he, he said we'd have to pay him fifty bucks a night to do it.
Well, the assumptions that I make on, on some of these costs are just with surveyors that I've worked with and what their cost is for using a GPS type thing. But, um, you know, there's, there's no definitive design. And this is the first I've heard of a pre-cast concrete type system, which would be a, a good system. You can engineer something multiple ways. And every contractor's going to be, if they're coming real close, it's shocking, you know? So it depends on the contractor, where they're coming from, if they're coming from West Cliff, Silver Cliff, or Pueblo. So that's why you're gonna see numbers like that all over the place. And there is no design. These are my assumptions.
And I didn't mean to get upset, not upset. Numbers are numbers. I was just confused because the numbers are so different. We're talking about something totally different. And, and I concur with you. You're not hired, I mean, I don't expect you to put in twenty thousand hours' worth of free work. That's not fair for anybody. So, you're quite very well taken.
Well, when we were, when we, when I did see the estimate that was done, initially, when I, after we went to the first meeting, then I got in touch with Jimmy and he sent me some information as to the grant, what was supplied, what was provided for that grant. I'm like going, there's no way they're gonna build this with CDOT money. You're talking about federal dollars and a lot of paperwork.
Okay, we need to move a little bit, I'm gonna need to leave. You're okay? I need to answer my question. What is your cost for this project in here? Just ballpark it for me.
Well, this right here, what I have is for civil engineering design administrative, administration of bid process.
This is bottom part?
Right.
The sub...
That's eight, I put eighteen percent in right now because it's federal and the paperwork is like this. Normally, it's right around, what I estimate it, it's anywhere between eight and ten percent. So that's where I'm coming from on that number. And then the construction administration, I just did a percentage just based on kind of what I know right now. You know, the, the design part of this project is probably the easiest part.
You're looking at eighty thousand in for your services?
Well, it would be mine and other, and other subconsultants, but yes. Sixty-two, yeah. And it depends on if you have a surveyor and you wanna, you know, contract with a local surveyor, that cuts costs down. I mean, these are just my assumptions, especially with the...
But your survey, your survey cost here, for six thousand, that's for the surveyor?
That is correct.
That's not your administration cost?
No.
So that was construction survey. There's a survey for the design and there's a survey for construction.
Right, but you're hiring that done, your firm isn't doing that, correct?
That is correct. That's typically how we work with the surveyors.
So in your case, then, we would have, what would be the figure that would fit? What you, I understand the, the engineer, all that, that's six, twelve, fifteen thousand. And then I see we have civil engineering design and administration of forty thousand. Is that maybe an estimate of what your cost would be?
Yes.
Okay, that's where I, that was where I was trying to get at.
Yes, that's all the way up to the, getting everything approved through CDOT, sending it out for bid and collecting bids, up to that point. That's what that would be, the bid process.
Okay. Engineering money for cost.
So I, I'd like to ask you, because we still have to find out from DOLA where we'll be even looking at November one. What would be the time commitment that we would have to give you to start the project that you chose?
Well, Jimmy, take us for that. Jimmy, what was, uh...
Okay, yeah, let me, uh, turn it on that. Okay. Uh, well, a few things. Let's step back on the estimate, uh, but I went over Kit when we had done this, when we initially did the sculpting and brought up the fact that we, I had the light believed at that time that the estimate wasn't within line of order would be. But it was based on, I guess, not assuming that you're gonna get federal money or what's involved in the federal money deadlines and that if it's something you could construct to just on your own or something.
So we're looking at...
So, so that's kind of, it's kind of where, where I think those low numbers on the estimate came from. So it, it's a difference between whether you're doing a county project or you're doing a county project funded with state and federal money. Timeline, um, okay, the, your FHWA date, uh, which is for design, is you have to have all your design complete, all your clearance received and ready to let the bid by May of eighteen. May thirty-first of two thousand and eighteen. So if that's being said, knowing that the clearance processes that are gonna have to occur, that's right-of-way, utilities and environmental, it has to be done, part of the process. A typical environmental clearance process, uh, seeing this is in a, a waterway, you're gonna have some four oh four minutes, the crossway wetlands and stuff. You're looking about a six-month process to get clearances.
After, after May of eighteen, so now we're ninety-four.
No, no.
You have to have that completed before May.
Okay.
So if you back that in, um...
It's December.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, by December, but that's when they start the process. So you, I think the latest you want to start this process is probably the first of October.
As far as the first of the, the process you're talking about?
Start the design by August, October first.
So as soon as we find out something through DOLA, that's the key?
Well, it's a month before you find out.
Well, DOLA says it's October first.
So typically with our, uh, DOLA, what they'll do is you'll know, you'll be notified to see if you've been awarded that money. Then it takes a minimum, from my experience, four weeks, four to six weeks to execute all the documents.
What we've done, and what we've done with DOLA in the past is that we pay it and then we get reimbursed.
We get reimbursed, yeah.
And that takes sometimes a month, six weeks, and people went through that. In the past, the way that we've handled other DOLA projects...
Fortunately, you can do that with CDOT money, but...
Pardon me?
Unfortunately, you can't do that with CDOT money. You have, you can't incur a cost before you have approved agreement.
But we already have.
You already have one in place, but that's the other thing we're talking about is your design phase. The option there for that was... So the, the design phase right now, like you're CDOT, uh, funding, you have twelve thousand, three hundred dollars for design. If you take Amanda's number of forty thousand, you know, you're obviously short. You would have to end up matching above and beyond that twelve thousand. You're actually awarded a hundred and thirty-nine, eight sixty, which is a hundred and twelve thousand approximately comes from CDOT. That money is all lumped into the project. So if you want to roll some of that money into the design phase and then incur, if you get DOLA money, DOLA can match on the backend on construction. So you're not putting money at risk, I guess.
No, I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable with how we would handle it because we've done four or five DOLA projects.
Well, let me ask, that's, we're gonna, one way or another, if we're gonna continue to use, if we're gonna use CDOT monies for this project, we're gonna have to have somebody onboard by October first or shortly after, isn't it?
Start some designing, I mean, and that's, that's probably pushing it to get clearance.
So we're gonna have to have that money anyway?
Because design has to happen. We have to have structural selection reports, which you identify whether you're gonna do like CMP, you're gonna do a pre-cast. That has to get reviewed by the bridge group and, yeah, they're approved. So there's a structural selection report that has to go in. You can't just say I'm doing this. We have to justify why you're doing that.
So basically, if we don't get the funds secured from DOLA by October first, um, this project is pretty much null and void because if we do, we won't be able to afford to do it with federal, with CDOT money.
What would it cost to you to build a bridge across there as a county expense?
Oh, it'd be, the last all-steel structure that I was involved in was, of course, we had all the equipment, we did it ourselves. This is just for materials. It was like eighty thousand.
How much?
Eighty thousand. But that, and, you know, once again, that's because we had all the equipment, so, I mean, just the materials itself, it would cost that much.
Well, we've come down to this, folks. We got two, I see two things happening. Number one, we're at least a year out, should it have been, getting it done. Number two, uh, we're looking at three hundred thousand dollars potentially to get done. Now, I'm a little, I'm a little ouchy because I've been burned. Uh, we went through a project that we thought we had it done and thought it was in good shape, and then we had to raise it, and then we had to raise it, and then we found some more things we had to raise. And what we thought would be a five hundred and fifty project, five hundred and fifty thousand, costs us eight hundred and fifty. So, and that was, a lot of that, your, your CDOT, you're not regulation, state regulations, but a lot of it was because of the state regulations. The second thing that I'm gonna ask, sixty days to me is unacceptable to close. I would like to figure out, if you run twenty-four hours a day, how damn quick you can get, excuse my French, how quick you could get it in? Because that is a major road in our county. And in the, in the fall, that's when we're shipping cattle and we're shipping hay and we got a lot of truck traffic goes up and down that road.
You know, I don't take what I said. I'm just kind of going with what...
Well, this is just a discussion.
It's standard, I mean, I guess, industry. I can tell you right now, City of Carter Springs is doing a bridge replacement in a pretty dense residential area. They, they got the opportunity to shut it down and they're, they're turning that bridge out, at least getting the bridge in with drivable surface within thirty days. Doesn't mean the project's completed in thirty days. It just means you have a drivable surface to get across because if you can get out of the road...
Well, that's what I'm asking, just the drivable surface.
You get all the guard rail, you've been doing, you know, the, the erosion control and that stuff, you know?
Because we can't have these ranchers making big loops around.
Although, if this structure fails over time, eventually, they're gonna be faced with doing it anyways.
Well, the death is, we're gonna have to...
We've done it in the past where you can put some, uh, limits in, within your contract documents to your contractor saying, we need to have this road, you know, clo, only close for a max of thirty days or, or whatever that means. But if you do that, then they're going to increase their cost to pay their crews to be out there more than eight hours a day. So, you know, there's kind of this give and take type thing that you can try to do with your work with your contractors.
You, you've not obviously been an elected official. And the first thing that we have set is twenty is our county people. And the, the cost is only gonna hold down, but we can't, from a practical standpoint, I, if we're gonna close that down for sixty days, I mean, we're gonna catch all kinds of political flak because we've cut down the main road that long.
Just curious, how long did you think you could shut it down?
I was thinking up to three to four weeks at the very most.
You were thinking what, Gary?
Up to three to four weeks at the very most.
That wasn't what I was thinking at all.
No, I know if it's a project that we did ourselves, uh, even with a private contractor, if we went with this structure like what I was talking about, this four-sided block culvert, um, certainly could be done. It would carry traffic for ten to two weeks.
It's really dependent upon the contractor. I mean, I've had contractors where they're, I don't know what the deal is with them, but they should have something done in four weeks and it's drawn out. So it really is, you know, you wanna be selective as much as you can be with your contractor so you have that comfortable relationship with them, you know? Because you can only force your hand on it so much, but if you get a good contractor in there, you can, you can get through this.
And it depends on the structure you're putting in, concrete, you can do it. You know, if you have to do it in concrete flatwork, you have to have it cured and test passed before you go to the next phase.
Right.
Through a CDOT process because if you're doing it in Kenny, you know, you can just, okay, that's good, let's, let's just move on. But there's certain steps you're gonna have to follow that are gonna need some training, so...
Would CDOT have an issue with the four-sided block culvert like what I was referring to earlier?
No, if the selection report justifies it, they're not going to, I mean, they're not saying that that's a product we don't want, I mean...
Is a shoe five possibility, I mean?
You can put a detour in? Yes, now, there is, you can do that, but be aware, if you do that, that's going to delay your approval processes, because you would have to have a detour on the private property.
Right.
You'd have to acquire a property, and we have to go through the right-of-way acquisition on that. Now, the cost, that's a timing cost. I, I'm saying that you could probably, if you have a great relationship with the property owner, they can donate the use of it to you without a problem, but you still have to go through the process. You still have to have a certified appraiser, not appraiser, acquisition service. You can't do it on your own, through the county forces. You'd have to use an approved, uh, appraiser and, uh, acquisition firm to do that. C-DOT has in the past offered those services up to communities that don't have the means to do that. The, the, I say it should cost, but it also costs you time, because it goes C-DOT, local agency. And so whatever their priorities are, yours are second, so...
So you're saying that we sit the concrete structure in there, and you can't do anything with that until they inspect that concrete structure? You can't over...
If it's poured in place, yes. If it's a cast in place, the concrete's already clean and, you know, the tests that they made.
But if we go with concrete, the cost goes up considerably, because I think the concrete's going to be in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. Whereas this aluminum box over is going to be about sixty-five thousand, so...
Are you aluminum box?
Like those pots that have the, half-horses?
Is that a, a content product, or is that what it is?
Yeah, it is a content.
So I, I just want to ask a plus to the timeline. You're mentioning May thirty-first is the, is the drop deadline for all the painter work and everything to be addressed and designed. So construction will be after May thirty-first?
Yes.
So that's the period of time.
Construction won't occur until October, because we'll have high waters, irrigation waters, and one thing, now that that's basic. Don't you think, Roger, October? Environmental, environmental clearance is, if we went out on a, do this, we wouldn't have to have that.
You won't use their funding?
No, I mean, if we went out on a...
Yeah, if you don't have, if you don't have federal funding, yeah, there's no, we...
You might need a 404, but other than that...
Okay, just curious. Yeah. Because that's starting to look kind of appealing.
So C-DOT could potentially do it.
What do you think?
But they would have to do a formal request for that.
He could do it next weekend.
Yeah, C-DOT, well, actually, our contract, we have them, our, so we can do that service, so...
Do we have any state-certified contractors in Dustin County?
They, okay, I want to take that, they don't have to be state-approved. They don't have to be on the C-DOT approved list. You can choose whatever contractor you want, but through a vetting process, you need to judge, they need to show quality or qualifications. But they don't have to be on an approved list.
They've just got to do the, well, they need to work, which C-DOT requires.
Right. It's better to get somebody that's approved, but...
It'd be nice if we could find somebody that's locally, and I don't know if this is possible, that's done a C-DOT project. Well, even without, with all of this oversight, I don't have a problem with a contractor coming in and being sure and stuff. That's what we're paying them for.
Well...
I would like to see somebody spanning the county.
The problem is, this, the engineering side you're covered, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the contractor knows how to do his paperwork.
So we hire another person to help him? So what this kind of boils down to is this DOLA grant, whether or not we're going to get that? Speak up a bit. Uh, what this boils down to, or comes down to, is whether or not we're going to get the DOLA grant. Because if we don't get the DOLA grant, we're not going to, we're not going to be within the timeline to get the engineering done by the deadline that C-DOT requires. So I think that's kind of what it comes down to.
Well, you also need to, like I said, Townalbida got some bridge money, and it was returned back to supplement their program, their pro, and that's through CML and CCI, who manages the bridge funds. If there's bridge funds that they can give back, it's just as simple as sending a letter saying, "We need this much money, is this available for this project?"
Okay. So today, I'm looking at a bid here of three hundred and four thousand dollars. The decisions that I think, first decision is going to be made will be, are we going to retain a ten-year engineering need? And then... I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead. Well, I was going to say, we won't, we won't really...
Until October?
Until October, next year. We what?
Don't need to make the commitment until October one.
And that will be when we find out whether or not we've secured the DOLA from this? Well, yes and no. I mean, we need to get going on this, so we can get some numbers that, you know, like we said, you know, you give us ballpark figures, which is what I would do exactly in your place. I do some consulting work, and I don't do a whole lot pretty gross, because I'm not in that process. At the same time, though, I think we can come in here, maybe I'm wrong, guys, but why couldn't we take that asphalt off of there? Let's go take a front-end loader, to take the asphalt off of the bridge? Oh, and it comes, if we, if we do go ahead and proceed with the project, you mean? Yes. Yeah, we could, we could do that. That's what I was talking about, I made that earlier, whether or not we could do that. It sounds like we can, so, I mean, we can, we can create some, that's what I should... Okay, traffic control. If we put a barricade up at each end, what do we have to do in addition to traffic control? Well...
I think it has to be in compliance with C-DOT.
Yeah, I've seen some of these engineering, uh, plans for these projects, and for what they require, we don't, we don't have the resources.
Well, if you're just closing road down, it's just, it's, 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 you just put a detour, grab one end, a detour at the other. You put, I mean, Anna could do that, that is part of the design to do a separate traffic control. Knowing, during, but you, if you were going to do it, you would have to do inspections and provide reports, so you expect to do, go up to speed and that.
Well, don't we have people that are trained as flighters and stuff? Is that something we can do, Roger? But as far as, of course, we can do that.
Yeah, you just have to have a certified traffic control supervisor to sign those.
Well, that could be something that the county potentially could do.
Yes.
And the removal was, what, what's going to take, is it going to take a trap over to that stuff out of there? Probably. As far as what, the removal of the structure, that'll be the contractors or something. I know that, but I'm asking, a trap over would be, so that's... That's what I would use anyway. That's something that, that potentially, that, uh, we could get done locally. Beach could potentially could do that.
Now, are those things that could, that need to be part of the project? Are those listed, like the demo and removal and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, they are.
They are? Yeah, the, the grant.
Well, I was going to go back, in this one, it doesn't, I'm going to have to go back. It, what it says is, it's left for interpretation. Where'd I put it? All right, it says, "Existing three six-foot diameter cohorts and associated head walls will be replaced with a pre-paved and cated structure, with a larger opening prepared to accommodate stream flows. Slash panels will be constructed on all corners. Three technically garden wells will be installed to meet national standards and reconstruction approaches." So, yes, I mean, it, it's part of it, but it just has to be, if you're going to do that work, you have to, we have to go through, you have to go through the paperwork, just showing that, uh, how that's going to be part of your match. It's just paperwork.
We have two, two local contractors, one of them, that's all he did for several years, was install bridges.
Where was this?
Now, when we do this, you cannot do that until you have authorization to instruct.
Yeah, we're going to test it.
So, so until you get that money in place, and then if you're going to do some side contracts beyond the general contractor, then, then this, it muddies the waters, it's possible, you can have multiple contracts, it just muddies the waters, because you have to have, that contractor's going to have to follow, the paperwork that general contractor has to follow, so you're going to have essentially two general contractors.
What are Kagan, do you want to do something like this? Can Kagan do something like this?
Andy would be interested in that.
Because, you know, I've seen him paving the state highways and doing all kinds of stuff that are on, on state projects.
Yeah, he'd probably be. But that's, that's when we get to the contractor, and then the way I see that happening is that would be, everything from demo to replacement would be them. After, but, yeah.
Now, you can get, whatever contract you're talking about, I'm just throwing these scenarios out. If he does it and can't do all the work, he can subcontract up to seventy percent of his work. He has to do at least thirty percent of the price of the contracts.
Okay, well, we need to move along. Anything else you've got, questions here? Well, I think we need to, give us some serious thought, and I think until something changes, as far as I'm concerned, and we get closer, we're looking forward to, we make things work.
Do you want, you want me to contact Christie, or you want to contact her?
Oh, as, as far as increasing the, uh...
Grant request.
Request? Uh, I, I don't know, you can go ahead.
Okay.
What are you going to add to that hundred and forty?
Yeah, it was a fifty percent, yeah, so...
Here's where we are in part of that, Gary, is that we work on a lot of DOLA projects, and we can kind of keep those centralized through one flow. It makes it simpler. Well, there's some things that I'm going to have to take care of, like the traffic count on that structure, she wants that. And then, as far as this, this bid estimate, we can... But that's, that's not some bolster that falls in your bidding, I'm sure.
Can I make a request that prior to October one, maybe we sit and hash out some of the other details that we're talking about?
As far as?
So that when October one comes along, we're ready to go.
Oh, as far as the designing part of it? It might not be a bad idea, I mean, in the meantime, maybe I can get some, uh, some numbers on how, what's the cost to the county if we went out on our own to do this? Just in case the DOLA application, application doesn't come through.
And if Amanda, we're ready to go on, on October one with a contract, so, or ish, October one-ish.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else on this one? Okay, thank you, folks.
All right, thank you.
For road and brisley, just a second. We need to get some mowing done on Weeds. I'm starting to get people fussing at me. There's one, I can't think what the name of the road is, as you go up on Lake Dewey's Road, there's a little loop that goes out and comes back. She's been fussing at me. Well, what we're going to do is wait till the spray got done, and then, you know, we, or at least let the road get sprayed, and then go out and mow it. Then everybody's going to get, do, is get with this. Well, we'll go down, they'll go to mow it after they go to C-DOT. They killed today's wheat, but they've already gone to seed, we got nectars, we're not having any impact on them. Yeah, I hate to mow it and then spray it, because a lot of this stuff is kind of leafy. I mean, it takes the, the chemical in through the leaves, so if we go out and mow it, then we... How about we agree to start mowing this lake in August, since it's July? And that was, we're coming up, we were going to mow. Don't we? Yeah, we're going to, we're trying to get there. Yeah, it comes by my place. The weed. I'm not fussing, I'm just trying to understand.
The weed, what it's been is, the weeds need to be sprayed first and then mowed. And that's with, with what happened, our wheat spraying is, is a month and a half past due, and we just now got that started, he started today, so now we can start falling up and start mowing the heck out of it.
You can also use mowing as a means of re-control. Let's get her done, quick as we can, guys, you know, you know where torque load is. We will.
At least that road.
I need to visit briefly, but we can do this afterwards, we'll drive in just a minute, but give them a map of the county? No, you're right. I've got a lady that's fussing out there on Boneyard, that come to our meeting a couple of weeks ago. And I can't remember the name of the road. Two of the roads are county roads, it looks like, and the other two are private.
Stephen Drive and...
Marcy.
And what? Marcy Lane or whatever.
Yeah.
Those are not?
No, she was complaining about the two roads she has to drive to get there.
Yeah, the two fifty...
Looks like two of the four roads she's talking about are county roads. That may be.
They were on them at least once a month or twice a month.
And this lady insisted she hadn't had any grading done, well, she worked the jack for years, and she's got some medical conditions she's worried about.
Two seventy-one, two sixty-four, two sixty-five.
We've been on them all week.
Those are just the three she gave.
Well, there.
Yeah, we've been on them all week, and then we're working on those. This was probably more than anything. This is last week that she fussing on the log, and Ronnie points, we've gotten done some. I am finding that people are going to fuss if their roads aren't like highways out here, or county roads. Some people expect them to be that way. That's why I went here about three weeks ago. One person on two fifty-five was complimenting us about how good a shape it was in, but then by the same token, on the flip side of that, one individual said that that same road was the worst they've ever seen it, so... I mean, so we got to take everything that people say when they're saying as far as when they fuss about the roads, so... What do we do as we go out? That is, I give them hell every day practically.
He does. Sorry, Booker, he's trying to disguise his voice.
Yeah.
And he wants, we got him.
It was a woman, oh, him?
Yeah.
Can you, can you sound like a girl?
He's got kind of a sexy automobile out there, a bike he's riding.
Yes, he does.
Okay, gentlemen, well, thank you, we need to move along. Okay. We don't need to stick around for anything involved. Pardon me? We don't need to stick... No, we, I want to talk about those two roads, and you, you know what we're talking here, I got to tell her probably. Yeah, we're, we're... Thank you. All right. Let the record show that Donna has to leave.
Bye, guys.
And, and I guess all we have left is Jackie.
Yes.
That agrees with, with our, with your agendas?
Yes.
Please, come forward.
Okay, this is, actually, Donna, before you leave, can I give you this? And then you're going to have to set a date. That's for a special use program, we're looking at the thirty-first of this month. Yes. Just to do a date, approve or disapprove for the special use program. Got you. And that's whether or not... Got you. Okay, um, I have subdivision waivers, Senate Bill thirty-five. Uh, Mr. Mitchell's here, and Mr. Mitchell, it has been done before, uh, with commissioners. This county road splits Mr. Mitchell's property in half on Vermont Road. Okay, so I did a little bit of research, and, uh, actually, Mr. Mitchell had a, this, was this a survey he was in, correct?
No, that, that was a survey that was just completed.
Okay. So here's the survey, and he had it outlined in pink, and then I did some research, and as you go up on Vermont Road, I was a little concerned, because this, uh, survey of Mr. Mitchell's went to half of the county road, one eighty-two. And I thought, well, that's interesting, because, uh, there's nothing that says that Mr. Mitchell's property is to, you own to the half of the road. Because it's a, uh, but, I did some research, and that's a really strange road, because the property before it doesn't go to the half of the road, but the property before that does. Now, we're talking about Vermont Road up in Montgomery Land, and then this goes to the edge of the road. So you go to the edge of the road, the middle of the road, the edge of the road, to the middle of the road. So there's no consistency, so I think Mr. Mitchell's survey is correct in asking, he says this will be about point nine-six acres, and this will be one point nine acres. He needs permission to have a subdivision waiver on both those pieces of property. So, uh, the county commissioners have done this before, because it's not, it's split by a county road. So I would like to have...
And those properties would be developed as one property?
No, two, because he would get a subdivision waiver for the top half and the bottom half.
How much, how much is that bottom half?
That bottom half, he, is point nine-six, almost an acre. And that's pretty consistent up there in, uh...
And the top half is about three?
One point nine. And that's pretty consistent up there around, um, I don't know, I call it Yago land.
Do we have other, other blots up there that are about an acre in size?
Uh, it's Yago land, so, uh, so that's what I call it, but it really is, uh...
Montgomery?
Okay.
Montgomery, Montgomery Tracts.
Montgomery Tracts. So, um, Mr. Mitchell is just asking for approval for a subdivision waiver, which would allow him a well on both these properties, so that he could sell them individually.
And what is your recommendation?
My recommendation is yes, because there's a county road that goes through this property, and it wasn't something that the homeowner did. It was something that was pre-zoning.
The county bill.
The only thing that I would ask is that if you do approve it, that Mr. Mitchell hires a surveyor to do a legal description of... to do a legal description of both properties so that I can put it on the letter to be reported.
What we've done in the past, Jay, on these is that basically, well, a good example's in Corita. Uh, there's some of that property that lays on both sides of the road that the same person owns. And we approved them to be able to do it separate because it's the old county road that separates it.
I know, it's Jackie about this particular property that she explained.
Well, I make a motion, we'll approve this, uh, the subdivision waiver for, well, tax number, how to identify it?
Um, why don't you, uh, why don't we identify it by the file number one oh one five eight four hundred?
One one five eight four hundred is the file number?
Or nine one.
Or nine one, whatever it is, you got it right? Okay. I make it up for that property. Is there a second? About some discussion? Well, you know, our, our goal, I guess, is to preserve the, the studies of the areas that's being worked on. At the same time, there's times that we have to juggle things around and clean up some issues. And you own both, on both sides of the road. And it's, and it's understood that as per our county policies, as a right of way, it's whatever it takes to maintain the road. Which, you know, some places are narrower, others weren't, none of it. This is pretty flat, isn't it, where this is?
Yeah.
So, uh, I have, I have no other objection. Uh, do you have any comments, Jay, or anything else?
Can I ask a question?
That's the attorney's.
Oh, I just, why is there a survey attached that talks about attractive land in New Mexico? Or is it?
That is actually how a surveyor does it, it's a Meridian.
Oh, east of the New Mexico principal, Meridian, Custer, okay, never mind, I see it now. Hey, withdraw my question.
I'll call for the, the, the question, all in favor, say aye, aye. Motion opposed, same sign. Motion carries, congratulations, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. What else, Jackie?
Okay, do you remember when we had that, uh...
Bill McCarty's estate?
Yes. Okay, do you remember that, uh, now that's another situation because Lake Dewey's is such an old subdivision that, uh, that Jane McCarty is trying to clean up all that situation that she had inherited. She's done a fabulous job. Uh, she actually has taken those lots and made them into larger lots, so we don't have the... I don't have a lot of the hassle down at Lake Dewey's, which is, was great. Uh, she gave the roads to the county. But we did not agree to maintain them, remember that? Okay, so while I'm on that subject, did we get a deed for those roads? Yes, it hasn't been recorded.
I want to say, yeah, that we recorded it.
Because upstairs, Charlie said he hasn't seen it.
I thought we recorded, I'll check on it.
Please.
Maybe we didn't get a deed?
There was a deed and, I mean, I remember, because I prepared it and I thought it, she signed it and got it in.
Yeah.
Okay, so if it's, it certainly just doesn't make it upstairs.
Yeah.
Okay, so now, part of the deal was, uh, when we were talking to Jane, she had these lots here because she wanted to give the county this two thing. And I don't even know if we took it, but that's beside the point. Then she has this big area here and this big area here. She's had them surveyed, so she needs a subdivision waiver here and here. And we kind of like agreed to, if she would clean up her mess, we'd help her clean it up. Do you remember that? So, so I got the legals on these two. The other one's a drainage ditch, I said, no, she can't have one on that, we don't want you to be in that drainage ditch. But I'm requesting that you let her have a subdivision waiver on this, uh, what is it? Let me see how many acres.
I think one of our concerns was that down the road, we're going to need some land down there to put some kind of a sewage treatment facility on.
We are, but we got, we got some more and this is like a ten acre parcel.
Mm-hmm.
And that will help them. And then I, we have some more land, wasn't even showing. Uh, we have a big parcels here and we have a huge parcel in here that we looked at, uh, and we've tried for grants and stuff. So now the state is allowing with an engineered letter to have fault systems. And so there is enough property more last year, without even going through Jane's, that we could do individual septics on people's property and everyone share them. So that's what we're working on now. You on this street share this one septic and stuff because there's no central location to get a septic. So what I'm asking for is to give Jane, since she's been so good, a subdivision waiver on this property so she can sell it and this property.
Why does she need to waive, what are, what are we waiving?
We're waiving, uh...
It's, it's less than thirty-five acres.
Yes, less than thirty-five acres. And it's basically called subdividing when you start doing stuff like this. So it's called a Senate Bill thirty-five subdivision waiver and it's usually done through the planning commission. But when we did, when we got Jane to do all this stuff that actually helped the county, we were trying to get the roads and stuff, uh, we agreed to help her with this. And so I'd like to have permission to give her, if she got the legals and stuff, the county commissioners allow her to have a subdivision waiver on both of these pieces of property. And I'll tell you the acreage because it's a large acreage. To me, it's a large acreage. It's a large acreage out in that little area.
You've got one that says thirteen point seven six.
Okay, that must be that larger one, because I knew it was over ten.
Thirteen point six, excuse me.
And two point seven?
And two point seven.
And this will only be one parcel. The person that does buy this parcel, Rad, can never chuck it to smaller pieces.
Let me see your bigger map. We've got, we have, this is Duncan Bodoff's, I think, isn't it? On the north end of this. This is the lodge, isn't it? Right here's the lodge.
That old lodge that, uh, used to sit right in here. And then right down here is Mr., uh...
Was this the house we've had a lot of trouble with, the silver on, the ground house?
Uh-huh, so the big parcels, that large parcel that that old lodge used to sit on. Of McCarty's. And then we have a house sitting right here. And that, yes, this year it had a little bit of water, but it would build up in here, of course. And then we're not going to give them one for this drainage.
Now, you're asking, they want this, which is where, where does this?
Uh, as soon as you come into Lake Dewey's and you go around the corner.
No, I mean, where are the bounds of this? I don't see.
That's on a small...
There's no county road here, does the road go here or does it go down?
No, it actually, that's what's really weird about this, it actually stops right in here somewhere. But this is the county assessor map for, um, uh, ownership only, so that's how come you don't see it.
Is this the road that you got drawn in, is that?
I, I didn't draw it.
That's the survey.
So that road exists now, then?
On paper.
Okay. I was just concerned about these folks having access.
We're going to try and block that.
They're, they're all right. Well, I guess I'd like to see, you know, we have over here, we have a, an easement that's, that's identified. I would like to see some kind of an easement along here identified, if you can, so that this person cannot impact the, the ability to get to these lots.
Correct, and, and I agree with, totally with you. Um, I thought this is all vacated. Yes, and I won't, I won't allow them to landlock anyone. And I know what you're talking about. But I just want an agreement that if we get that all straightened out, that you will sign a letter with the legal access and all the stuff covered for a subdivision waiver.
What's planning is only, so, talk to do.
Yes, and he has no problem with it. Because these are the largest lots in Lake Dewey's.
This, this is a...
We spoke about it.
This, this big parcel, Jay, could be an extremely valuable parcel, put a lodge or something on it. More as well as, I could see it's valuable, it would be some growth to it.
Yeah, see, they'd like to come back in and get a subdivision waiver, but we will put that on, that will be in that paperwork.
So what do you want us to do today?
I want you to approve two subdivision waivers for the William McCarty's estate, please.
I still move.
I'll second that, in discussion, you will send us a copy of your restrictions on it right away and so forth?
Well, you have to sign it.
I know, but that, that will be on the...
It'll be on there.
Okay, I have no discussion, Jay, do you have anything else to add? Call for the question, in favor, say aye, aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Okay, the next one is waive the fee for the Wetmore Community Church. That trailer house that you see across from the community building in Wetmore. They would, I don't know if you, you guys are really probably familiar with it. Uh, here's the parsonage, here's like a wooden walkway and then here's a trailer. They were going to remove the trailer, they probably already have it, they haven't been down there. And they would like a building. It has always been the consensus of the board to waive the fees for nonprofits when it comes to building permits. This building permit for the Wetmore Community Church is two hundred and, what do they say, two hundred and fifty-three dollars that you'd be waiving.
I love that one.
It's how much?
Two hundred and fifty-three.
I'll second that, so we can continue discussion on it. Okay, now you have a dark line here. Is this the creek?
Yes.
And is this the road into the community building?
It should be on the other side of the creek. No, it's just...
Yeah, the, the way over here.
The community building is just where the squares are, in the graph.
This is, maybe it would be helpful if you knew.
This is the, which way's north on here?
I think, I think that way.
Okay, three ninety-five, I see it here, okay.
This is north.
Okay, and this is the church that's, that's, not the one on the intersection, but down over the, right in Wetmore.
When, uh, the walking bridge that Alden takes, that got washed away, that pivoted down, but it didn't leave.
It can brace you.
Uh-huh, there's, that's how you get to it.
Yeah, and is planning and zoning seen this?
The committee? No. They don't see, well, I usually don't show them this stuff.
Okay, I'll call for the question. Favor say aye, aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Okay, then...
Now, let's see, will that be? Hmm. I hope they're far enough away from the creek.
Yes, because it'll be replaced on the same, uh, foundation.
Well, it shows fifty-seven feet or something.
Uh-huh, and by, they're, they're good, by our standards right now, they're really good. Okay, my next one is, uh, a bangle.
Oh, seven nine hundred?
Uh-huh, and here's the deal. This was turned in as someone living in an accessory structure with a stovepipe and two additions. Uh, contacted the gentleman through the county attorney, um, told him that he need to get a septic system if he's going to live in this structure. He, uh, actually said he couldn't afford a septic system and he doesn't spend enough time down there. So he did permit his two additions. But since he's permitting an addition to an accessory structure, he has to permit the additions in an accessory structure. But now he's asking for permission to have, uh... It's a vaca- vacation cabin, use, use less than thirty days a year. We haul everything in, food, water, porta potty and haul everything out. We haul gray water and waste to our house at Black Hawk and dispose of it. They would like to continue, so if you grant them permission to do this, we're going to have to change this permit into a dwelling because you cannot live in an accessory structure without a septic system. I have no problem with whatever decision you make. I do have a comment that, uh, everyone by the state of Colorado has to have a septic system because you have plumbing and the plumbing code is now, uh, with the septic system. He's already, um, been living in an accessory structure. He took the accessory structure out in nineteen ninety-nine. This, oh, we have a picture.
Well, I think in this case, I mean, he's wanting to be able to use an accessory structure to live in and, and, but doesn't have any septic or sewer system to it.
Correct.
And I think the simple solution to that is put a septic and sewer system in.
That's why, um...
Because that follows our regulations.
Correct.
And yes, you can haul it in and out, but over the long range, that probably isn't the best solution. That's my, just my comment. Jay, what do you think?
I absolutely agree, I'm opposed to this. People who say they haul their, their, people claim they haul their sewers and gray water out. I have found from experience, don't quite always do that. We have state regulations, I'm opposed to this.
So what do you want, a motion from us denying the...
A motion denying the variance. The portable chemical toilet.
How do I have the variance application here?
You should have a copy of it.
All I have is a letter, that's your room.
Yeah, you showed me, but I...
Oh, I probably didn't give you a copy, it's just our form.
Doesn't matter to me, I'm not opposing, just because I'm concerned about the health and safety of people around them. So I believe that we deny the application. We, we deny the, allow that?
I hear you.
Okay, that we deny the application for this gentleman.
And can you identify that by number?
Yes. One oh one oh seven nine hundred.
One oh one oh seven nine hundred, thank you.
All right, I'll second the motion, do we have any other discussion? All in favor, say aye, aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Okay, one oh one eighty-nine four fifty. I believe you have a letter from a concerned neighbor in your packet?
That's the very last page, is it the email?
From a Terry? Yes.
Yes, the very last page of your...
I know, I'm looking, I see we've got some other letters from some other people here.
Yeah, and that's just one of your...
These are just FYIs?
Yes. Okay, so this is a, um, a letter from, um, a concerned neighbor, I have four of them, on this property, one oh one eight nine four fifty. This has been an interesting property, um. It's a gentleman that has some difficulty with the law. And his mother, his girlfriend owns the property. Now it looks like his, it, that doesn't matter, let's just space that part out. Uh, it caught on fire when he was cleaning it up. Now it's just burnt out property, uh, burnt stuff. stuff. We don't have any ordinance, because we're still dealing with the burnt trees, as you heard earlier, in Wetmore. I don't know what we can do to, this would be something maybe for Mr. Smith, to ask someone to clean up their property, because the one that owns 50% of this property, I think is back in prison. His mother lives in another state.
Nobody's occupying the place, then, no?
No.
Is there any place to occupy there anymore? Is it all burned out?
It's all burnt. But I don't know what I can do personally, to help the neighbors, because I get, we get appealed to the mother, if she would get that, if she would get it cleaned up, but we don't have a.
We don't have any authority.
No. So I don't know what to do, but I told him I would bring it.
I would, if it was me, I would thank them for bringing it to our attention, that we have no ordinance, we have no building code, we have no authority to take any actions.
Correct. That's correct, and I, I would not recommend I write a letter to them unless there's something I can back it up with legal action, and there isn't any.
Just tell them, we would like to help, but there's nothing we can do from a regulatory standpoint.
All right, super. I just, you know, it's like everything else, you wish you could.
Okay.
Okay, so, this is the report. This is the report for the special use.
Return the folder. I want to keep this.
I got you a little disclaimer, that says, return folder.
I saw that.
She has a list of who has her folders.
Yeah. And then, probably would be best if I gave the assistant one, I used to give it to Chris Lang, I'm going to give it to Brenda. Because you don't probably want any more paperwork.
They don't count? I'm kind of mad.
You're right, I don't want any more paperwork. And so what it is, is it's an application for a storage unit, on the other side of Shadow Ridge. Yes, it was approved, and you will see the minutes in there, and you will also see the conditions that the planning commission placed on the storage units. The issue is, is that the Shadow Ridge is a subdivision that sits right, it's in the town of West Cliff, but then you, you look, and you've got these containers, that are going to be storage units, I'm just going to give you some background, because then we had to figure out a date. But, you go up Lake Dewey's Road, and there's a bunch of commercial containers, and in Shadow Ridge, there's two or three lots that are commercial. That is not the issue. The issue is, if I'm bringing in my U-Haul, the town of West Cliff is very concerned about their roads, which, you know what heavy trucks do to roads, pretty soon it breaks them down. So if you come up with any suggestions, that you would like to add to the conditions for Mr. Choak, I think that would be a good possibility to look at. We've got to figure out some way that, when Mr. Choak has a customer that's going to use these storage units, that they don't go through the subdivision. And I know it's a public road, and I know it's for everyone to use, but, you know, after a while, we're going to have a, a nice road that is starting to be broke down. And I don't think that that's fair, because if I lived in there too. And then, when Jay helps me out with my budget. Paperwork. See, I knew I could get that one in there. I would like to have a goal that we do do something, because I think they call it the three mile rule. And I think that we need to probably implement something like a three mile rule. I think that, yes, it was commercial going up Lake Dewey's, and I think that we need to find something that we can work together with the towns, because if I buy in town, and if I buy in a subdivision, and I spend the money, and it's paved roads and stuff, and, I don't want big trucks coming through. I don't even like them coming down my road, and I live on a county road.
But this is in town.
That is right, no, that's in the county.
This is town. Okay. And this road comes through it.
The county road.
On this corner.
And that's a Bumblebee mining claim.
Now, and the Bumblebee is the one that you're on. And now, the, the access is where?
The access would be off that county road.
You said they were going through a subdivision.
No, we don't want them to go through that subdivision. So my suggestion would be to add one more condition to those conditions, and I don't know how you would word it, maybe Clint could help, that ask Glenn to put up a sign that said, no heavy travel through the subdivision. I know he can't stop people, but he could put it on his website, maybe, and, just so that we would at least give that subdivision a chance.
But the subdivision is in West Cliff. So why doesn't the town of West Cliff put restrictions on those one area of that?
They can't. That's a public road. That's a public road, yes, they could. They could put a sign that had a weight limit on it. But what if I was moving in there? Does that mean I can't take my U-Haul in there, and move into my new house, if you guys put a weight limit on it?
Whatever he's done, I did what needed to do, and asked for forgiveness later.
I like that attitude.
But, can we make an entrance off of, off of, County 243 here?
Yeah, he's, he's fine on his entrance, and he's, he's good to go, he's got access and everything.
So if you don't have any access back here, they can't get to you. Right?
They come down Lake Dewey's Road, you would make a right at the, is that, that's not passing for, where am I trying to say? That mine, where Towries live, what's that mine? And Green Street. Then you come down that road, this is going to be right by. I'm trying to figure out something we can do. Legally, I don't know if we can do anything, because it is a public road, you're using taxpayer money to maintain it.
You could, contract when they lease the space, saying that you also agree that, leasing these containers, that you will use the following road, ingress and egress to the property. They sign the agreement when they lease the property, and then if they violate that, we could go to the owner and say, sir, could you please handle this as a breach of your agreement? And I think that could solve it, with signs also, maybe, but, if that was part of the agreement, I think.
I don't think that's Mr. Choak.
I'm not the owner.
Yeah.
He just keeps looking at me. I thought you were, that's why I'm apologizing. But I mean, if we ask, if we.
But that's a perfect idea, so we could add that, this is, and see, I'm not saying it's going to be approved by you or disapproved, I'm just saying.
Correct.
We add that to it, though, it cleans it up and gives authority.
Please, because, you know, after thinking about it, I'm like, how could we solve this? Well, you can't close down that road, because sometimes subdivision roads have to have an ingress and egress. Plus, you're using county taxpayers' money to maintain that road, so I have as much right as you do, living in there, to drive on that road. But if we could stop some of the heavy traffic, we would be better off.
You'd be a much better neighbor to West Cliff if you did that.
Thank you.
I can agree with you, and maybe if the owner, put that in the contract, that you leased on a stipulation that you will only use the following method.
So if you do approve this special use permit, we could work on the wording for another condition, that. Because you're going to have discounts, mining up the road too. But we need to work with both towns, in the same sense, because we don't want to see something on the edge of town that we don't want. And, and stuff, so if you could figure out the wording, I think that would go a long ways. If you approve it.
Got it.
That's it.
I want to know if it's Bumblebee or Bubblebee.
Okay, I have a little problem.
Glad, I was wondering about that.
I'm just buzzing right along.
Okay, so I did the agenda, and I'm going to blame it on autocorrect. Always mistake things. Because I swore I wrote Bumblebee, it came out Bubblebee. And then, did you notice the trivia said, Bubblebee is approved by planning commission? I thought, no one will see that. Oh my gosh, you would not believe, everybody says, so Jackie, how's Bubblebee?
Does this have one E or two Es on V?
True.
I'm serious, as, as a mining claim, it's, it's got a.
It's two Es.
It's two Es? All right, Jackie, any other issues for us?
Yeah.
Good report, thank you. At this time, I show this thing, the last item on the agenda, is there any business to come before the board at this time?
You were going to set a date. Then we have a date of August 31st, to approve or disapprove this special use permit.
Why not?
You all right, Macau?
Which one?
This Bumblebee load.
This one.
If we get the wording and stuff in there?
Need to get back to us with that wording in there, then I think we.
But we will have a recommendation from the planning and zoning at this time, by the 31st?
That's what this report is. Yes, that's what that report is.
But you're, you're changing, you're adding a modification to it.
I would, you can change the conditions. I was asking you to change one of the conditions. And since they were for you, you can change that condition.
Let's bring this on the agenda for the 31st.
Okay.
Anything else for us? Thank you all for your endurance. I will declare the board adjourned at this time, and it is 3:08. Can I get a receipt from you that I referred this?
Yeah, I should.
Thank all of you for being here.